Okay, we're ready to start. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this December 21st, 2022, uh, 2021, excuse me. Appreciate all attending here. I know we're in the middle of the holidays, and I know that a lot of people have not been able to attend our meeting as they often are able to normally. So we have a, we have fairly short agenda and, but important nonetheless. And before we begin, I just want to remind folks that the city of Fort Lauderdale is hosting City Commission Meetings in person now. For additional information on how to view the meeting, please go to www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. I will repeat that. Now, to help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracting, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. And two, if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up in the City Hall lobby. A member of the City Clerk's office staff will be there to assist. All right. So, good afternoon, members of the Commission. You all doing well? Good. So why don't we begin with communications? And we have one communication, and, just a minute, let me get to it. This communication is from the Budget Advisory Board Hybrid Meeting, and it's a request by the Board to ask the City Commission to allow them to meet at 5:00 instead of, I guess, at 6:00. And I inquired with the city attorney as to why this is coming before us, and he indicated that in the enabling ordinance, that some, somehow it says that it should start at 6:00 PM. So we need to, to approve a change of time. Does anyone have any objection to that?
Actually, if I can correct that real quick, I know I mentioned that, but actually, when looking back at the enabling ordinance, it does not have it in there. So that's why here we don't have to do an ordinance change, since it's not specifically delineated at 6:00. It's been a matter of practice, that they're just seeking your approval to change it to 5:00. So we won't have to do any sort of amendment. Just you're okay is fine.
Okay. So anyone have any objection to that? Okay. No objection? Okay. All right, very good. So you have our blessing, you can meet at 5:00. All right. Yeah, sorry, sorry, Brian. Did you sign up to speak? We also had another gentleman who signed up to speak, but I don't think he intended for the communication. Thomas Leasakos, is he here? Anyway, he signed up for both Business One and the BAB communication, so I just assume that might be a mistake. Okay, so moving on to new business. Of course, the main topic of conversation this afternoon is an update on the Bahia Mar negotiations. But before we begin, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the community for being patient and also for participating so eagerly in, in how to best formulate a, a resolution to ensure that whatever we agree upon here on this commission, that it's in the best interest of the community. I know that a while back, this commission tasked me, as well as Commissioner Glassman, to work with the, with the developers to see how we could fashion perhaps a better site plan and a better concept for the Bahia Mar site. As many of you may recall, in 2017, previous commission had voted to approve a site plan and a concept that it turns out that the developer has indicated they're not interested in building anymore. So they, they reached out to the city, and it said that, you know, let's see if we can work together to come up with a better concept. Now, even though they have reached out to us, I just want to emphasize to everyone, both here in the chambers and those listening, that the developer could still, from today, go ahead and build what he, what's been approved. And what's been approved is approximately 651 residential rental units, hotel, and various, various amounts of commercial space occupying a good portion of the property. When this came up for a vote in 2017, I was firmly against it because I felt it, it's, it just completely displaced the area upon which the International Boat Show could operate their event. And, and now we're working towards a new site plan that hopefully will be able to accommodate as much of the interests of the Boat Show as well as the interests of the developer, but most importantly, what's in the best interest of the community. But going, with regard to that, many of you who read the Sun Sentinel, and those who don't, I do want to point out that there are some statements made in an editorial today that I think needs some explaining. Not explaining by us, we need some explaining by the author of the editorial. In particular, there are some statements in here that were completely inaccurate, and, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is because this issue of the Bahia Mar has been a very emotional issue, not just for members of the community, but also for members on this commission. We continue to try to do our best to work with all parties concerned to ensure that the ultimate result that we achieve is the best possible compromise that we can, we can provide this community. And what doesn't help is when there's misinformation and when there's disinformation, as well as trying to cast aspersions on the participants who are trying to achieve a good result. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples so that we set the record straight, and so that going forward, everyone understands where this commission is, where, what position we take, and how we're trying to proceed in the best possible way in order to achieve that result. There's a statement in the, in the article that says, that talks about negotiating conflicts. It says Florida's government in the Sunshine Law prohibits commissioners from discussing a project in private. Well, that is absolutely false. The Sunshine Law allows a commissioner and a mayor to discuss in private anything, as long as it's not with another commissioner, or it's not with another member of this commission, including myself. That's what the Sunshine Law says. But the, but the comment goes on to say, "But Mayor Dean Trentalis and Commissioner Steve Glassman, whose District Two includes Bahia Mar, have each held private talks with the tenant." That is correct. Trentalis and Glassman are negotiating a deal on which they must cast decisive votes. Negotiators should not be the, the decision makers. Well, who else are going to be negotiating? It has to be us. The public deserves transparent negotiations on a project so vital to the city's future. Well, I have to say that of all the, the many years that I've served on this commission, which is close to 13 years, that I've never seen a, a subject more in the public eye as I have seen the Bahia Mar. The many hours of public comment and commission discourse that have taken place on this subject over the many years is unparalleled with any project that I have ever seen happen in the city. And every time there is an opportunity to bring it before the, before the community, this commission brings it before the community. The process that we followed was that this commission assigned myself and Commissioner Glassman, because it's Commissioner Glassman's district, to work with the, the developers separately, which is what we have been doing. And we've been coming up with compromises, and, and when we reach a certain milestone, we bring it to the public. And when we bring it to the public, we allow public comment. Just like today, we are allowing public comment on a milestone that we, we are able, we are able to achieve through this negotiating process. And I think that's, that you couldn't get anything more transparent than that. And I think that to suggest that somehow this, there's some smoke-filled room and some back, back deal that's happening outside of the, the eyes of the public is not helpful in trying to move forward and make, make a, make this work for the community and, and finally bring closure to the process. And I just think that any, anyone attempting to cast aspersions on myself, or the commissioner, or this entire process is not helpful. And I think that people should get their facts straight before they start trying to integrate their thoughts and trying to distract people from what's really going on. Moreover, there's a, there's a statement in here that, that public land should only be used for public purpose. I agree with you 100%. But this commission has already made its decision, not this commission, but the previous commission, that they've already approved a site plan that allows private development on public land. It's already been done. This commission cannot undo that. So if there's anyone in this community who thinks, and there are plenty, because we get emails every single day or week, in which people say, "We're giving away public land", when we're, when that isn't even on the table. This, the previous commission already approved buildings constituting 600, approximately 651 units, plus a hotel and all the other things that I mentioned earlier. That's already, that's already done. What we're trying to do is shrink it. We're trying to shrink the development to enhance the opportunity for the Boat Show as well as the public. So this commission is doing its best to try to undo some of the decisions of the past in order to benefit the community. But the statement in the paper, which says that we're giving away public land, that's already been done. There's nothing that we can do about that, except try to work with the developer and seek a compromise which helps return some of that surface area to open space and for the Boat Show as well as for public purpose. So with, having said that, I just want to, I just want to summarize by saying that this commission is doing its best right now to make every effort to achieve a compromise, which I believe is going to be in the ultimate best interest of this community. We're not going to get what everybody wants. We're not going to be able to achieve something that's perfect, because there's no such thing as perfect in the sense that so many people have different ideas as to what the Bahia Mar site should look, look like. Some people have said, "Go ahead and build on every square foot, because that will enhance the, the beauty of the beach," and others have said just the opposite. So this commission is doing its best to try to use its good judgment, its reason, and to hopefully come up with a, a final decision that will, we feel will be in the best interest of the community. All right. I'm sorry it took so long, but I just feel that, you know, so much continues to be said in the public, and I think it's unfair to the community and to this commission that these things not be addressed. Commissioner Glassman, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, Mayor, thank you. I actually, when I read that yesterday online, and then today, this morning in the paper, I, I was kind of surprised to see some of that language. I wasn't going to even talk about it today because I'm just, you know, it's a distraction, and I understand, you know, sometimes it's great to try and get as many clicks as you can online, and it's, you know, it's sensational, and, you know, it's that kind of approach. And I, I understand that, that, that gamesmanship. But as you said, I, I was very troubled by the misleading statements about what the Sunshine Law is. And then to insinuate, not only to state what the Sunshine Law is, but then to insinuate that you and I broke the Sunshine Law by having these quote "private meetings," it's just absurd. You know, it, it's not uncommon that the commission over the years has looked to a district commissioner to, you know, do a little bit of the heavy lifting and maybe having more discussions with whatever projects coming down the pike. We did that even, I, I didn't see the Sun Sentinel opine when Vice Mayor Moritas, for a couple of years, worked with Inter Miami. Why weren't they so upset that she was having quote "private talks"? Even just that language is so, so nonsensical, and it, it just makes people think, "Oh my gosh, private talks." Well, you know, elected officials meet with people every day, and we have those quote "private talks." It doesn't mean that anything nefarious is occurring, because you're trying to learn, you're trying to gather information, and you're trying to express your own opinion on whatever the topic is when you're having these quote "private talks." But it's, it's just silly for our hometown newspaper to, to write these things. And again, I agree with everything you just said, let's move on. I, again, I was disappointed in those insinuations and those implications, because there's really no truth there, and it's just silly, and it's, it's a distraction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the topic today is, we've reached another sort of a milestone, insofar as the city attorney has published draft documents with regard to the lease and other related documents. And I'm going to allow Mr. Boalow to give a short presentation as to what they represent. And, Mr. Glassman, it was you that wanted this on the agenda, so, and is your district, so I defer to you as to how to respond to that. And then we have a number of people who've signed up to speak, and of course, I'd invite any other members of the commission to comment as well. So, Mr. Boalow.
Thank you, Mayor. As I stated at the previous meeting, a lot of the conversations seemed to be in the abstract, and, and we were sort of talking around documents rather than regarding documents. I had suggested that we do our best to bring to you the most current iteration of what documents we in fact were looking at. I will note that they are in draft, as you adequately stated. There's still a lot of moving pieces in the sense that there's still discussion, there's an outstanding appraisal, there's other business issues that will dictate the contents of, the final contents of these agreements, based on what the city commission ultimately decides is the proper use and the proper deal, for lack of a better term, for this particular property. So what you have before you are three documents essentially. There's a, a master lease agreement, which in and of itself is being requested to replace the existing lease, and gives us another opportunity to draft this document, to incorporate those things that perhaps we believe were not included in the 1995 version. The second is what's called a phased lease, which is a proposed phased lease, which would deal with the construction of these condos, buildings that we have been talking about. And I, I won't get into too much detail, but it's, it's, those won't be entered into until such time as there's an actual building built that would eventually be excised from the master lease agreement, and they would be replaced with these phased lease agreements. Thirdly, there's a, I won't read the whole title, but we'll call it the Master Declaration, which is sort of a document that regulates how all the parties on this particular property are going to live together essentially and operate, whether we're dealing with permanent easements, the promenade, relationships obviously with the Boat Show and other events that will occur, which we've talked about for several meetings now with regards to certain protections. All these documents obviously will come into play. As you've noticed, though, they're very involved. They're lengthy, they have a lot of legalese in them, and a lot of it is commercially reasonable and, and common language that are contained in these types of leases. I do have my team here today, myself, Mr. Hernandez has joined us today as well, if you have any questions, as well as Ms. Solomon. But my recommendation would be, going forward, because these documents are involved, my preference as your attorney would be to initially sit with you individually and go through these agreements with you, page by page, and we can discuss each section, what they mean, what some of our concerns may be, because there are some things in there, and I'll give you an example. Throughout the various documents, there is a delegation of authority to the city manager, no offense to the city manager, but there's a lot of it. And one of my recommendations may be that there not be as much delegation to the city manager, and some of that could come to the city commission. I can't make that change on my own, I need your direction to do that. But in order to do that, we need to have that conversation. So I think it would be more fruitful if we sit down, or I sit down, my team sits down with each one of you, we go through these agreements, discuss the issues, and then bring that to the public forum, and that way we'll have more of a fruitful discussion with regards to what amounts to be almost 300 pages worth of documents. But certainly, the, the master lease is probably the first one we want to focus on. The phased lease will come thereafter, and that'll be based also on, on the decisions that you all make from a policy standpoint with the lease, and then obviously the Master Declaration sort of binds everything together. Certainly, we can answer any questions for you, and...
All right. Commissioner Glassman, do you want to begin this discussion?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that as well, Alan. I, I enjoyed the fact that this was attached, and it was in the backup, and that public could see it. I think that was really important. And, and going through it, I agree with you. I, I think it's important that you do get a chance to hear from each of us about that. The reason that I did think it was important for us to at least have this come forward today is I, I just think this is a process, and I think that every step of the process deserves to be seen, not just by the commission, but also by the public. So what you said, I agree, actually, and I did write that note myself, is in terms of some of the authority given to the city manager. But I, I thought this is a good start. I specifically looked through all three documents in terms of protections for the Boat Show, and I was very happy to see much of that language running throughout all of the documents, and I'm sure that that's also still a work in progress, and I'm sure we could hear from the parties at some point in time if they have concluded all of those agreements. But it was very important for me to see that language and how the Boat Show was protected, and I did find that in, in each of those. So I, I think this is a good start. I'm curious to hear what other folks have to say about the documents, but I look forward to when we get a chance to meet on this. I also hope if we get a chance to hear from the tenant and the Boat Show what their thoughts are also on these documents. But I also want to make sure that we know what the next steps are. I want to ask the city auditor about the review. We all did receive the Comprehensive Economic Development and Fiscal Impacts of the Bahia Mar Mixed-Use Development to the City of Fort Lauderdale and Broward County Economies. This was submitted to Ron Bahia Mar by Business Flair and WEG, the Washington Economics Group. So I want to hear from our city...
What's the date of that?
When did we get that? I don't, we got this at least a week ago, I believe. We all got this done.
It was December 6th on the document.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Actually, so I, I want to make sure that we're looking at that, because I think our next steps will be in terms of, you know... will be in terms of, you know, which way we're going to go financially. I found that a very interesting document. I want to make sure that our city auditor opines on that at some point in time. And I want to make sure that we're also looking down the road, knowing what the next steps are so that we just don't have these meetings and then we say, "Okay, what's next?" I want to make sure that each one of these meetings leads to something else that you think you need, Alan, to keep moving this forward. Because I'm hoping that at some point in time, we will be able to have that discussion amongst, you know, all of the commissioners and the mayor in a public meeting and then figure out what our next steps are before this site plan would go to, you know, through the DRC process. So I think this is good and I'm, again, you know, thank you for putting this together for us. It's obviously, it's a lot of paper, but I think it's a good start. And obviously, it needs some refinement and I'm just curious to see what everyone feels about it as well. But I just want to make sure that we keep moving down the road. Thank you.
All right, great. Before we open to public comment, does anyone else on the commission have any questions to ask of Mr. Boalow at this point? Okay, there being none. Okay, so, thank you, Commissioner. There are a number of people who've signed up to speak and I'll call you.
I do, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Not so much a question, because we both did the same thing where we heard the same thing, which was removing the city manager out of the document. Out of the document. I'm just understanding, I'm trying to understand, A, why is it in there? And B, why do you want to substitute it?
It wouldn't be in all instances, but that's what's been proposed by the tenant. So for example, if, once we have the site plan attached, the proposed site plan attached, there's some amendments that occur, that can occur. From the non-regulatory standpoint as the owner, the city manager is able to approve and has to approve within 30 days changes to the site plan. I think that should come to the commission. That's an example. So there's certain things that have been requested by the tenant. And there's some other things that I don't necessarily want to telegraph. I don't want to start throwing grenades because you may not all agree on it, but there's some issues in there that I certainly want to address. And not unnecessarily so, but that's just one example. So there's a lot of places from an administrative standpoint where the city manager, and in talking to the city manager, I believe he doesn't want that authority either. So there's a variety of things that the city manager can approve without knowledge or consent from the city commission and I think that some of those things can be changed. But that's up to you all to decide, not to me, not for me. So I'm going to point those things out for me. And there's some things that administratively, absolutely, city manager should do that and you all will agree to it. And there's some more maybe substantive things that you'll want to address and that as well, you'll be able to decide which goes to who.
Okay, I understand that, but then, if you drafted this...
No, he didn't draft it.
I didn't.
He didn't draft it.
He just...
He, I think he said he received it from the tenant and then he started making refinements.
He made refinements to it.
Right. We've reacted to these documents. They were actually drafted by the tenant and we've reacted to them as we've received them.
So when we look at the, go through this document, then you're going to produce a separate document or is our only document going to be that of, no, I understand.
It's a draft, right?
It's a draft, but we will be working off these documents. For the most part, they're very well-written, they're standardized and, I shouldn't say standardized, but a lot of the...
It's a typical commercial lease.
Correct. There's a lot of common language in there that you'll find in any commercial or residential lease. So for the most part, it's well-written, it's a good document to work from. But there's some business decisions as well as some policy decisions that you all need to make and that's one example, again, discretion.
So after we discuss it, you're redlining, is what you're saying?
Right. And we've done a little bit of that internally and we've discussed it.
See, that's what I'm saying, that piece right there, that's what I wanted to hear, the internal.
Yes, absolutely.
I want to see what you have recommended.
And that's why I want to meet with you all to, because right now, the recommendations have been more questions that we've had, we've needed to clarify some of the things that have been asked of us through these documents. So, another example for...
Okay, so you kind of answered what I wanted. Yeah, I wanted, I wanted his redlining.
There's been back and forth with regards to getting more information and then obviously...
But you just told me what I wanted, which was at a later date, you want to sit with us and go over those so we can compare the two. Okay, thank you.
And I think even the city manager said he doesn't want all that.
No, I was just trying to get that out.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Mayor, can I just get clarification for the public's sake? So we're going to meet privately and then, how will the public see, will it just be a redlined document? I mean...
It's going to be right back. I just...
Bring it back with a markup of what the changes were.
Right. And as the document evolves, you know, we'll, hopefully, we will evolve it not too many times and we'll be able to do it so we don't waste your time. We'll be able to get you something that is more finalized. And a lot of it will come together as you all decide on the policy decisions with regards to the appraisal and the business terms and all that. The more finalized it will be once those decisions are made. But in the interim, we certainly can bring back and explain everything that we're doing and what we're discussing and what changes. I just can't make those decisions myself.
Right. And that's kind of why I asked, I wanted them to hear what we're doing step by step, not so much of what you said in the beginning, because they all understand that from what, from the meetings I've had. And then we come back and continue to work on a document that's in front of us.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, can I, I guess I have a few questions for Alan.
Right ahead.
Just tracking all this.
Thanks, Alan. So, the, I guess I'm still at a very, kind of, this very general level. So this, there's different, right, business models we could do here, right, with the tenant. Various business models that the business deals the city could enter into with the tenant. Is that right?
As with any negotiation, sure.
Great. So broadly, what is this, that they've proposed to you, what is the business deal? It's a, is it a revenue? How would you categorize it?
I'll do my best, yeah. It's based on, it's based on a base rent. It's similar to what we have now, a base rent model with a sharing of gross revenues from the commercial and various activities on the property. I'm not going to do it as good justice as perhaps the auditor or the actual applicant or tenant can do, but it's basically a revenue sharing model in that regard. And then there's a component with the condos where we get certain percentages of the sale fee and then there is also a transfer fee which would be resale percentages that we would receive throughout the time, which the tenant, and again, I don't speak to the numbers, that's not my game, but there's been, the projections you've all have been discussing have been that business model that is in the documents now. We've left it as is because no decision's been made and because that's how it's been proposed. But obviously, as you dictate, those changes will be made accordingly to the document once you decide.
Okay, got you. Great. So this, this is good, in-depth, you know, possibility for the revenue model of, or the business model, business deal of base rent with sharing revenues. So that's this.
Simply put, yeah.
Okay, so we could explore other ones too. I just want to make sure we're track, so what are the other, another model is, I forget what the phrase is, but kind of like, based, just a, not revenue-based, but just based on the value of land or...
I'll probably defer to possibly the auditor, but again, simply put, that would be sort of a straight rent.
Straight rent.
Based on the value of the property as you would rent any piece of property based on its value with obviously different calculations, not, not being in business essentially with the folks, with the businesses that are on there, not getting revenue in that regard, but just based solely on the worth of the property. But I'm sure the auditor can more eloquently explain that to you.
Is that, and again, just very high-level basic so I can understand, just straight rent, is that just, or how would you describe that? That model? We're talking about a different...
So that would be a very standard landlord-tenant relationship where the rent is based on whatever's appropriate, equitable, reasonable for that property, for the rights that are being conveyed for the period of time that you're going to have in place, as opposed to what we're looking at here, which is a base rent and a percentage rent. So there's two components to this one. The percentage rent is a variable component, the base rent relatively fixed. It starts out at $600,000, for example, and then goes up at a later point in time to $750,000. And the percentage rents start out, for example, for the hotel at 4.25% of gross operating revenue. They drop down during the build-out period and then they rise back up again to 4.25% after we get to the completion date. So essentially, we are a partner, for lack of a better term, in the successful operation of the site. The upside to that is that as the business performs well over time, as the hotel performs well over time, our percentage rent will go up over time. So in effect, it has an inflation factor built into it. The downside to that is you are tied to the success of the property. So there's both a benefit and a detriment to being in a percentage rent posture as opposed to being just a straight landlord-tenant flat fee.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. So we got base rent, sorry, Mayor.
So summarize, because I'm looking at it up there too from a 30th level. There are three sources of revenue that could flow to the city. One is a straight rent based on value, return on investment. The second one is a sharing of the sales proceeds. We get, there's an offer on the table to share the sales proceeds on not just the new construction, but the resales as well. And the third is what we...
And is that, that second one is in these documents, right?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
And the third is something we've always been a participant in and that is revenue sharing on the operations. So those are the three that I can identify. Is there anything more?
And what's in front of us, correct me if I'm wrong, it's sales and revenue sharing? Do I have that right?
There's sales and then there's revenue sharing. There's two separate, two separate silos of profit.
Well, I guess there's sales, revenue sharing, and the base rent.
Right. There are three components, there's three components to the current structure.
That can flow to, that are offered, that are possible revenue streams to the city.
Yeah, right. And what you have with this obviously is the base rent. There's a significant one-time capital infusion at the initial sale of all of the condos branded residences. And then we have an ongoing transfer fee that they've agreed to which will allow us to continue to participate in the activity as these things are sold for the next 100 years. Built into the model is a rough expectation of turnover of each unit roughly over seven years. So some will sell faster, some will be held for longer periods of time, but that seems to be a reasonable holding period for most folks is about seven years. So every time one of these is sold, there's a new cash infusion back to the city, not to the same level as the initial sale. It's obviously a smaller one going forward, but again, it allows us another opportunity to continue to participate in the success of the site. As these, as these units are sold and resold and prices go up, we will continue to get a piece of that business going forward, again, in this partnership structure.
Okay, great. Thank you. That helps. So we've got, so we've got base rent with revenue sharing, with sales and revenue, and we've got a model of straight rent. We're just trying to think of all the other model possibilities. So another model possibility, and you've all probably seen this float around, is this idea of like selling a portion of the land to the, have you seen this, selling a portion of the land to the Tates?
Well, that has been, I've heard it in the community that someone said, "Why don't we just, if we do decide to allow condos to be built on the site, just sell that portion of the site to the developer and take back the balance."
Right.
Allow us to be in privety with the boat show, letting the boat show operate on the balance of the property. That has been put out there. We haven't, not even discussed that yet. I think it's premature because we're not there yet.
Okay.
That has been, that has been offered.
So that's, I guess that's a third option? I'm just trying to think of all the options out there.
I don't know if that's a revenue stream per se, but...
Or it's a, I guess a business deal? We're trying to find a good deal for us and them.
That hasn't been offered by the developer, so...
Okay, so you guys haven't talked about it. Okay. So I guess that's the third one, but it sounds like less, not a lot of interest. Then, trying to think, then fourth option, again, I'm just staying very high-level for the moment. Fourth option is, hey, and we've talked about this, which is, hey, let's just buy out the lease, right? Let's just, we'll...
Which is what?
I don't know what the right term is, but buy out the lease or pay for the, pay for termination.
That hasn't been offered by the developer.
That hasn't been offered, okay.
Commissioner, just, if you would, when you make the comments and you're speaking hypothetically on these scenarios, don't say, "We did that as an option," because we really haven't done anything other than say, "Bring a document back today with a consensus."
I'm just saying, these are options.
No, but say that, don't say "we" because it's public record, it's no different than what got put in the paper.
It's a royal "we," it's a royal "we."
Sure, I want to say "we." I'll say an idea.
Yeah, it's out there, but don't say, "We did it."
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Perfect. So the buyout option is another option, but not a lot of interest there, I guess. That's four. I'm just trying to think, are there any other options? Again, I'm just thinking big, I think those are the four main ones, right? Is that, do you think we've covered all of them?
I think you've covered, thank you.
Have I mentioned all of them? Okay. So, okay, and now just going a little bit deeper. So now we've got, the tenant has proposed only one of these four, I guess, is what's happened so far.
No, that's not true.
Okay, they've proposed others.
The tenant has proposed a rent, straight rent, coupled with a percentage of sales and resales, as well as putting money into a separate fund for humanitarian, I will say humanitarian or community purposes, which they've outlined to us in a previous document. So those are, that's what, that's what the developer has proposed so far.
Got it. Okay, so the proposal that you all have received and we've received as a commission is the base rent, revenue sharing, sales sharing.
Not revenue sharing, sales sharing. On this particular, right now...
There's no revenue sharing.
I don't think there's revenue sharing on this new model.
Yes, there's three of them.
I thought there was revenue sharing.
Is there revenue sharing on this new model?
Yes.
Yep.
Base rent, cost of the tenant.
Yes, there's a, there's a percentage rent, a percentage of gross operating revenue of the hotel, gross operating revenue of the retail office and commercial space, gross operating revenue of the marina.
Okay.
And at some point in time today, Mayor, it might be helpful, and I don't know if applicant has it, but we saw those slides the last time of all of these formulas and what that total amount would be and maybe that would be helpful today, just to refresh everyone's memory.
Since, we didn't, we didn't bring it today because it's not part of the conversation. Today was supposed to be just about the draft lease documents, so that's why, you know, I could, since they're public record, I can have them sent to you, Commissioner, and so you can review them.
Oh, no, no, I'm good. I'm just, I just want to make sure we're all covering, because you saw, we just didn't understand one thing.
Yeah, I got it.
So now, it's just to clarify all this for all of us, because I think some of us are still a little confused, so, okay, so great. So we've gotten that one, this one proposal and that's what we're working on. And the idea being, hey, we can really dig into this proposal and then we could also, you know, and you all working with the tenant, could also explore others, right? You could do just straight rent if we wanted.
We could do straight rent, which I think is what, what, I think, that, just one second. I think that's what, that's what, that's what initiated the idea of having a valuation of the property.
Okay.
An up-to-date valuation so we see exactly what percentage rent would, we would be, should be entitled to.
Got you.
And that's what we're waiting for right now. That's why we can't really talk about terms yet until we have that evaluation so we know, so we're talking all from the same value of the property. And so we can't, what is that, the middle of January, I think you said we may be getting that? Early February now? Okay.
And Commissioners, may I just add one more thing? There's one more component to this as well, and I don't want to leave this out because I think it's important. There's also a residential annual rent which will be paid, basically the HOA for each of the condos is going to have a rent that they pay as well. So not only do we have the base rent on the master lease, but each of the individual buildings, the condo owners are going to be paying a residential annual rent as well as part of their HOA.
Does that go to the HOA, though?
No, that comes to the city.
Okay. So the city will be collecting annual fees from HOAs?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
And what does that represent?
So it is residential regime, unit owner, $1 per square foot for each residential unit, and that has an increase in, by the CPI, minimum annual increase of 1%, maximum annual increase of 3%. So we've got a range, we'll get at least 1%, we'll max out cap at 3%, but it'll be a dollar per square foot per unit.
And that's for, and that's attributable to what aspect of our relationship with the homeowner?
That'll be between us and each one of the condominium associations. It'll be in those HOA documents, is how I understand that'll be drafted.
Right.
But we'll have a lien right against those units.
What's the nature of the charge? Is it a rent?
It's rent. Yes, sir.
And there's a little nuance there, although it's not in addition to. So when, when that phased lease, those rental fees, yearly rental fees will be by operation of the phased lease. That phased lease is going to be excised, that portion, that building is going to be excised from the master lease. That's going to reduce your, the lease and the financial arrangement you have under the master lease, because it's going to be basically moved to the phased lease. So it's not necessarily in addition to, although you're going to have that extra revenue, but it's also going to be subtracted from the master lease.
I see. Do you understand that?
Yeah, the basics.
It's not really, it's not really additional.
Yeah. Yep. I get it.
So you have, so just from a visual standpoint, so right now you have the property, right? So you, let's say you do the master lease for the entire property.
Right.
You're going to build this residential tower, this condo tower, and you're going, that's going to be operated under a phased lease. That portion where that building is, is going to be controlled by that phased lease and no longer controlled by the master lease. So you're actually going to cut that out, take it as a phased lease, and then that's going to be subtracted from the master lease.
Gotcha.
So that occurs also on the financial side.
Okay. All right. That helps. Thank you. And then, so Mayor, if I'm understanding you right, we're projected to get the appraisal back in February?
That's right.
And then, and then once that happens, then I get, what would happen? So you could, you and Commissioner could talk to the applicant about what it's worth and then explore the second option of straight rent, I guess, is the idea?
It's always been my preference.
Okay.
Because all this other stuff gets a little squirrely in the calculations over the 100 years.
Okay.
So, but anyway, it's a Commissioner's decision, so we'll bring that to the table.
Bring that once we get that. Okay. Great. So thank you. That's great. I just had to understand the high-level options.
Ben and Mayor, I have one other point for clarification. I thought we had an appraisal done already with the lease as it currently is.
It was, it was more of a comp, comparative value. It was, it was definitely a competent assessment of value, but it wasn't a full-fledged appraisal per se, not like the one we had in, what was it, 20?
16.
2016.
Right. And Mayor, even in 2016, if you read that appraisal, when it gives you that value, I think it was 216 million, they called it a hypothetical value. What does that mean, hypothetical value? These appraisals, just so you know, you can look at them every which way and parse them every which way. It's really very interesting when you get into the weeds of these appraisals.
Well, you know, if you take, if you take the real estate exam, they teach you in the book that appraisals are not a science but an art. So there are, there's no defined boundaries of what an appraisal is. It's just, you know, it's best, the best call you can make as to value. So, anyway, we have, any more questions?
Well, my point is, I kind of thought we already did that, so I'm, I guess I was wondering why we're doing it again.
Well, we already agreed to it, so.
Okay. Some of us did.
Agreed to it two meetings ago.
Okay.
So, all right. Anything further? Okay. Public comment. So I'm going to call three people in a row, start with Kevin Kodesh, followed by Thomas Lutsiakos, and followed by Steve Gannon. Is Kevin here? Yes, you are. There you are.
How many minutes, two?
What's that?
How many minutes?
Yeah, two or three minutes if possible, preferably two. You know, the judges always tell us, the less you say, the more you hear.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Ms. Vice Mayor and our esteemed Commissioners. I'm here today to vote and hopefully, you know, give you some more ideas of what the value of this property will bring to our neighborhood. I'm a native Floridian for over 60 years, well, nearly 60 years, and just, I see the, you know, that this property right now is in dire need of renovation, rebuilding, and, you know, there's a lot of plans out there that we're seeing. You know, as of today, I know you went through a lot of numbers, so if I'm repeating myself, I apologize, but currently, the city gets about $2.2 million in revenue from the, from the property. With the proposed plan, we heard a lot of numbers, but the city will earn $12.3 million in rent alone every year, $75 million in cash over the initial three-to-five-year term of the proposed deal. And if we use what they call net present value, I'm sure a lot of people are aware, the $75 million in cash over the term of lease equals about $4.5 million per year, therefore totaling the city's annual revenue to about $16.8 million. I was not available to be here for the last meeting, but I did see it on the YouTube channel and reviewed it, and, you know, I've come to the conclusion that we can't draw blood from a stone. I think that the Commission and the Mayor and everybody involved has done a lot of work, a lot of research to try to better the area, the community of the South Beach area, which I personally ride my bike just about every other day through there and past the Bahia Mar. I'd like to also note that I'm a former owner and resident from the New River Landing property, which is also under a current, I believe, almost 97-year land lease, and they were given an extension, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, several years ago, to bring it back up to about 97 years. Is that correct? So I look at that property, and to me, having lived there, it kind of gives me a little bit of a pain in my stomach to think that we have so many people opposed to building a property that's going to be 96% value to the residents of our community. We can go there, ride my bike, get, grab a cup of coffee, sit by the beach, and, you know, do all kinds of nice things that are available to the public as well as the residents.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I get it. Wow.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Just if I could, in closing, say, I heard, you know, as far as the boat show goes, we all are very interested in keeping that. Mayor, or I'm sorry, Commissioner McKenzie, asking of the boat show owner and promoter, what is it that I can do for you today? Give me, you know, one, two, three, four, A, B, C, D, which I thought was wonderful, it was great. Thank you for doing that. And, you know, it just seems to me that everybody's looking for more and more, and there's no end in sight. And I think that, you know, the Tates and the developers have done a great job with your, with your team up there of coming up with a great plan, and I think we should not keep having meetings every three months and make a decision and move forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Is Thomas Lutsiakos in the audience? He wasn't here earlier. Followed by Steve Gannon, followed by Barbie Pearson. Hello, Steve.
Hi. Steve Gannon here. I'm going to be very brief. I just want to reiterate, I really don't, I am not comfortable with condos on private land, and I'd really rather not have a new lease. I realize that the Commission's trying to make improvements to a bad situation they were always, already in, but it worries me that we may do more harm. And when you say harm, the harm is that we're going from a 40-year lease to a 100-year lease. That's 60 years of harm, losing control, potential problems, all kinds of things. Realize the, realize the powerful negotiation position that the city is in. We are the landlord. The 2007 plan is really not feasible without properly, without a long lease to build. Even the rental buildings are not feasible with only a 40-year lease left, you know, considering it may take four, five, six years to build a building, how much is left, the timeline of the current lease. So do no harm, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to say something about that.
Go ahead.
Stephen, I don't want to get into an argument, but I'm just going to take an issue with that, the fact that rental buildings can't get built with 41 years left. I'll take exception with that. Now, just so you know, on the South Finger, which was already approved for the Marina Village, that has just received all permits, and that is moving forward. There's no reason why, on the North Finger, right on A1A, those two buildings can't get built tomorrow. There really isn't. So that's something I've been trying to prevent. I want that vista between the intercoastal and the ocean. I don't want those two large buildings on the North Finger, but I just want to take exception with the fact that those buildings could not go up now with 41 years. That's, I'm just going to make that point.
And you're right, it's a subjective, it's a subjective argument I make in that I don't believe it would be financially viable to spend all the effort in building those buildings and the expense to only have about 35, 36, 37 years to get it back in rental income. Is it, and so when I say feasible, it's not against the law, and it's not, whether it's financeable or not doesn't mean anything to me, so if a private venture capitalist put the money in, is it a good investment with the short time left on the lease, relatively short, to build a building like that, where you get enough money back to really make it worth it? When you weigh everything from the risks of what can happen, all those sorts of things, I just don't think it's feasible. And it is subjective, I'll say that.
It's a gamble. It's a gamble, because there's a Commission down the road, maybe in 20, 30 years, that extends that lease, and then guess what? There's a whole bunch more years left on that, and then you can just keep adding to those rental.
Will you be on the Commission then?
I don't think so, no. No, I'm just chugging along till 2024, actually, so here we go. No, I'm not. But I just want to say, we can't make these statements as they're an absolute, because I don't think they're an absolute. I think it's a gamble, I think it's a risk, and I think you could go ahead and build those two buildings on the North Finger. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree with that. Thank you, Steve. Barbie, followed by Janet Scraper, followed by, let me see, Ann Hilmer. Hi, Barbie. Can you pull that, yeah, great.
Hello?
Yep, I can hear you.
Hello, everyone. I'm still on the stance that I had before. Fort Lauderdale is our yachting capital of the world, and the boat show, I'm just reiterating, the boat show and the marine industries are the economic engine of the city. Bahia Mar is a working marina with many supporting industries as a part of it, providing jobs for many and maintaining the economic chain. Fort Lauderdale is the yachting capital, and we need to maintain the image. It's what makes our community special. It needs to continue to grow as the industry is adjusting to adding big mega yachts. It needs to be developed as a world-class facility to compete with the global yachting communities. The boat show doesn't need condos crowding it out. They need to be able to expand in the future with more mega yachts coming in. So we're reducing space from this year's boat show and with no room to grow in the future. The area right now is adequate, but in, and in the 2017 plan, it was relegated to a garage, and in the new plan, they would use, would lose one quarter of its space. So they need more expansion, not condos taking up what they need. The other thing that I wanted to.
All right, so let me, let me stop you there for a second.
Yes.
So, right now, the plan is to occupy even more surface area than what is being, what is being proposed.
In the current, yes.
What is your response to that?
Mm-hmm.
What's going to happen to the boat show over the next 40 years if they were to go ahead and build what they have today?
Oh, if they kept the plan that they were proposing, of course, they would be losing a lot of land.
Right.
Correct.
Would it be better for the Commission to consider a plan that allows more land space or less land space?
I would say more land space to allow the flexibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please go ahead.
No, but that's exactly what we are doing.
Let her fill it out.
I mean, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And the other thing, which, I'm not sure of the legalities of the leases and the subleases and all that, but it seems like, you know, with all the subleases on all the different parts of the property, I think, I feel that the Commission and everybody involved in the city should have a say or know what's going on with these leases. But again, I don't know the legality of that, or if that's only between the lessee and the sublesssee. So, and so that's what I had.
Well, I'll be honest with you, Barbie. I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, when we do a new lease, should we do a new lease, we can, the city can have a little bit more say in what goes on with these subleases.
Yeah. I feel that's important.
I agree. Mayor, are you finished, Barbie?
I have one more thing, if I can.
Okay. And then we'll let Commissioner Sorenson speak.
It's about the hotel branded residences. I just want to make it known that, you know, that it could be, they're still under condo law, the condo hotels, residences, not the hotel part, but the condo residents are still under condo law, and will have HOAs that they will have to contend with. And now, the owner will, can either, I don't know if it's going to be used like a vacation club, are they going to use it for Airbnb? Because as you know, vacation clubs now are not in the best shape because of COVID. So how is it, are there going to be blackout dates for unit owners during the boat show? Is it going to be a yearly, yearly occupancy of an owner? Or is it simply going to be an investment where they will have the manager, the flag management rented out?
I think they're just going to have to comply with the current condo hotel ordinance that we have in place, right?
Condo hotel boards? Okay. Not the regular condo association statutes?
Well, right now, it's, we're still trying to figure out what the status.
What it is. Okay.
But I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, it's, it would fall under the condo hotel ordinance, correct?
It depends how it's going to be.
It depends, yeah, we're so not there yet.
Okay. I just wanted.
Appreciate your, you make some very good.
To be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorenson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just brought up the boat show. What's the, and we probably have this number, I haven't seen it, though. With the 2017 site plan, what was the detrimental impact to the boat show? Do we have any?
Well, if you look at the site, it covers almost the entire site.
So was.
The land site.
Right. So did they say, has, so we don't know, like 50%, 80% reduction of the boat show? What, I'm just wondering what that impact would be?
I don't know.
So I can somewhat quantify it?
Ken, do you have, is there a percentage? I mean, I don't think we had a percentage, but I think just, just looking at the site, looking at the, at the approved site.
Yeah.
You could see there was precious little land-
Right.
And a lot of it was relegated into a, um, a specially designed parking garage-
Yeah.
Where it was supposed to be kind of pushed into the parking garage-
Okay.
As part of the available land space. So I don't know if there was ever a percentage, but I can say that it was certainly more than fifty percent was, would be, would be absent.
Okay.
Maybe seventy compared to what we have today.
And actually, this site plan, Commissioner, more than doubles the, the open land on the peninsula from the 2017 site plan. It about doubles the open land.
Okay, great. So we go from, so let's say 2017 was, let's say, uh, you know, sixty percent negative impact on the boat show?
Say, let's say that, we could say that. I don't know the number.
Whatever, just-
Just take that as a general.
Sixty percent.
Down to twenty percent.
This one right now, they're saying, what the boat show is saying, twenty percent negative impact, right?
That's what we've been told, yeah.
So sixty percent to twenty percent. So in my view, that's definitely moving in the right direction. Is it possible, can there be a site plan that has a zero negative impact on the boat show?
We're working-
You all talked about that?
We're working on it.
Well, also, you have to remember, you're looking at it on a, basically a scraped land with just a hotel there now. So of course there'll be more open space.
No, no, I'm not-
If you develop anything, there'll be less open space.
Oh, no, no, I'm not even talking about what is right now. I'm talking about site plans. Talking about-
Right. But my, my point is that of course there'll be less than what's there now, but-
No, 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 I'm not even talking about-
He wants to see if there's any-
Let me try to explain it.
There's anywhere we could go from.
Yeah, because this is important. So let me try to explain it in a way that makes sense. Twenty seventeen site plan, let's say, had a sixty percent negative impact on the boat show.
Okay.
Just hypothetically, right?
Well, I'm not gonna say that because I'm, I'm gonna refer everyone to the December fifth, 2017 minutes of the city commission before us. If you read those minutes of that commission, and I have them right in front of me, the boat show actually was glowing over the 2017 site plan. And you can read it yourself, like, so, and that to me is the conundrum here. So when you bring these points up, I just want to refer everybody to the December fifth minutes and read, please read what, you know, what, you know, Phil said and what Andrew said and-
Let's not go there.
I know, but I'm just, well, you need to go there because if we're going to try to say that we're hurting the boat show, I'm saying that we're doing everything we can to protect the boat show and make sure the boat show is successful. So I, I know where the commissioner is going, but you have to look at everything in totality. You can't just parse out little pieces of information without looking at the whole picture. And in 2017, everyone was thrilled with that site plan that put the boat show in a garage and filled the entire peninsula up with buildings and had less than half the open space that we have now. So that's, that's all I want to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so-
Continue, Commissioner.
Okay, so then I guess the idea is, hey, maybe in 2017 it had zero impact? Or it was, it would still work with the boat? It would work fine with the boat?
So this is, this is what the boat show-
I'm just trying to understand.
Boat show folks told us at the last meeting-
Yeah.
At, that in terms of the amount of exhibit space-
Right.
On the land side, and I'm talking about the water side because that's not gonna be touched. Land side, they're, they're, they're going to experience an impact of a twenty percent reduction of their exhibition space-
Right.
From what they have today.
Okay.
All right. But in the previous iteration, I guarantee you, I don't know the number, but it was more than twenty percent.
Gotcha.
So we're working in the right direction.
Right, exactly.
Whether we get to zero, as you phrase it, I don't know. It's part of the compromise.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, that's my question is, can we get, can we configure the site plan-
We're working on it.
In a way to get to zero? Because that'd be my hope.
Yeah.
Is all I wanted to, whatever 2017 said, can we get to zero? Okay, thank you. Yep.
I, I do want to point out, if we're talking percentages, I would like to know what percentage of property the boat show has gained in the past couple of years based on the entire peninsula, starting with the marina going to the convention center? Because we can't isolate this property and say, you know, we're reducing the boat show's footprint on this property. We have to look at everything we have done as a city and commission to allow for the boat show to thrive and flourish and have more space. And we also need to look at the inside space that I know Steve and Dean worked on to allow the boat show to have more inside space. And I believe this site plan has more inside space than 2017. So, so let's look at it all. I hear what you're saying, Ben, but I think the whole peninsula is important too. And because we all, I know we all have the same goal of making the boat show bigger and better. But this is a piece of it and I, I get it. And I think this is better than 2017. But I don't like to hear a twenty percent reduction either. I'd like to know what we have done collectively to increase their footprint, the entire peninsula.
Oh, I thought, okay, so I may be off then because I thought their, and we can get them to come up here, I thought their analysis of twenty percent reduction was total, um, area.
Just on this site. It's just on this-
That's a good point, Ben. I'd like clarification too.
Because could the boat show people come up? Can we just have them clarify that? Because that's important.
And I, and I think, Mayor, actually, I think that what the site now is offering, from what we've been discussing with all parties, is even more than the 2017 boat lease, a boat show lease with the tenant called for in terms of usable space, you know, air controlled space, tent space. I think we've gone above and beyond what even is guaranteed between the tenant and the boat show, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, yeah.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead. Commissioner Glass, Commissioner Sorenson, do you want to ask, this is the, this is from-
Andrew Doolan Forma.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, did that make sense what we're trying to figure out?
I understand what you're saying, but you know, the Los Olas, we're gonna lose the parking lot because we're digging out, you know, that, that's gonna get replaced with the marina, which doesn't actually come up with a huge amount of increase in slips. You get some bigger slips when you, you do that marina. Right at the moment, we've lost, let's say thirty thousand, three, thirty-three thousand square feet at Swimming Hall of Fame, fifty thousand square feet at DC Alexander that's gonna go under construction. Los Olas on the land portion there, which is used for setup breakdown, actually making the show function, which you use for DC Alexander, that's another thirty-three thousand.
Are those temporary, are those temporary interruptions or per-
Permanent.
The Swimming Hall of Fame.
That, that would be permanent because the building will extend all the way, as, as I understand it, west so that any land space or, would, would disappear there.
Okay, I don't know that to be the case, but, um-
So just, um, plans that we've seen, it looks that way.
Okay.
Um, Los Olas, which, you know, you currently use the parking lot for a setup breakdown as well as DC Alexander is, uh, where we've got, we've got police vehicles, we've got police, you know, some of that. We've got some of our concession operation over DC Alexander. That will get redeveloped and just be a park and-
Well, we do have the lot, the park by, we do have that park section that remains open to you, correct?
I don't know. Well, we actually had a quick conversation with Steve prior to this meeting to, to meet in January to see what other space is available to actually operate the event.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think this, I think the commission purposely leaves that space open. It's a, it's an open space on the beach, so-
Right.
So, well, to, to the Vice Mayor's point though, there are multiple venues for the boat show. And, uh, and, you know, to the extent that space can be worked around, I mean, for example, the convention center's now been expanded significantly.
Has been expanded, correct.
So there is an opportunity for indoor space that might not have been there before.
Certainly.
So, um, so you're right. I mean, there are ways to try to, you know, move the pieces around and still have the most magnificent international boat show that there ever was.
That's, that's what we strive to do.
We are, we are the home for that and will always be the home for that.
And what about Pier sixty-six? I think there'll be some great opportunities there as well, won't there?
Well, the marina is really the only portion we're using at the pier. We use Pier South at the moment, but eventually that will go under construction, you know, Pier South. So the footprint there will shrink also once Mr. Lewis starts on that. So I mean, right at the moment, just the pieces we talked about is six point seven acres.
Right.
Six point seven acres what?
Of open space.
Going away.
Going away.
Going away.
Going away.
I mean, that's a big reduction. Okay, and then-
That's overall, that's not just on the Bahiamar site.
No, that's overall.
Overall.
Other sites that, you know, constant-
Multiple venues, right.
And it would be the same for Tortuga also because they're gonna lose, you know, places to be able to set up, break down, operate the show, which will then eventually, you know, impact the beach lot because that will be the only place you'll have to do staging for the boat show.
Well, don't you, don't you use the park by the Los Olas Bridge as a staging area right now?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
And what's the, Andrew, when you said twenty percent reduction, what was, contextualize that for me.
Which, I didn't, I didn't say that, so.
Or, we've heard it, I think, of twenty percent, the current Bahiamar site plan would result in a twenty percent reduction of space or-
If you looked at-
Totals, yeah.
The 2021 plan as opposed to what we just did 2021, it would, the, the land area would go down about twenty percent.
So current-
It still would be better than two, 2017.
Twenty seventeen, gotcha. Okay, great, that helps. Thanks.
Andrew, I have a question because I know you just mentioned you do the staging area on the south side of the Los Olas Bridge, but, um, this was a great boat show, everyone said it was, everything was successful, but you didn't really use Los Olas Marina, did you, this year?
We didn't, no.
You didn't? Right. So my point is, and did that affect you negatively at all?
Part of not using the Los Olas Marina this year is lack of inventory available in brokerage boats because, you know, during COVID, the boat businesses, you know, had a tremendous, you know, tremendously successful. So we didn't have enough brokerage boats to fill the north side of Los Olas.
Okay. So do you anticipate that that's gonna change going forward?
Certainly.
Okay.
It, 2023, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Ken, I'm sorry, Andrew, don't leave. Twenty seventeen lease-
Yes, sir.
That you all agreed to has a designated amount of space that you said was okay, right?
Right.
Now, the new proposed, um, site plan, did it add space or did it take away space?
Add space.
And it's contiguous space, am I correct?
Correct.
On the waterfront.
Correct.
A better layout, right?
Better layout.
So you're okay with the site plan? You just have some other issues with, um, Bahiamar that you want to resolve. So you don't have a problem with the site plan?
Correct.
You have more space now based on seventeen to now?
You have more space than the seventeen plan, correct.
Okay, so you just have these other issues that have come out in a letter that you guys put forward here recently that are issues. So we can, um, holistically now say we agree with the site plan and we need to deal with these other issues instead of saying something's not there that's there, which is it increased from seventeen to this new proposal now? It's a better fit?
It's a better fit. It's still less than we have at the moment, but it's a better fit than seventeen.
Thank you, sir.
Andrew, you're saying 2021, the proposed site plan, you're good with it? You like it? Is that what you just said?
That's what he just said.
That's what I thought he just said.
He said, you know, we all agree it's a good site plan.
You all agree it's a good site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're good with the reduction of the-
Well, I mean, nobody's good with a reduction, but-
It's not a reduction. By his own admission, by what we are reading in these documents, it says we increased, not reduced. So for the record or not, I'm not going, trying to take anything from you, Commissioner. I'm just saying, we just had testimony that the space increased, just for the record, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, right. So, but don't, just so I'm clear-
Thank you, Andrew.
Hold on, Andrew, I get-
Oh, wait, get back there.
Just so I'm clear, just so I'm clear. So the 2021 site plan, I think someone from the boat show has testified it's reduced twenty percent in the, from what's currently available, right?
Correct.
So can we have that person that testified, come up today and testify? We have a document in front of us, we're trying to move forward. I would, I need something to either support what my fellow commissioners are saying or support the record now of what we have seen and heard in our own meetings from you, your representation, that site plan is fine, it increased from seventeen, and you had other issues. So if that person is saying now it reduced twenty percent, is that person here? Can we get that person on the phone?
Wait, reduce what? What are you talking about?
According to what Commissioner's saying, it's a twenty percent, twenty percent reduction in space. And someone from the boat show-
That's what he just said.
Uh, tested, no, he said-
It's twenty percent reduction, he said that.
In the space.
Yes, twenty percent reduction.
Land space over the, the show that we just produced.
Mm-hmm.
If you took the land space available there and you-
Okay.
Then compared that to the proposed new site plan that everybody's-
You lose twenty percent.
Twenty percent less, just on, just on the land area, not on the water.
So when I asked you the question, because I'm not, you know, I'm not the person that can draw this stuff. I'm not, I don't profess to be a professional in, in all these intricacies. But the twenty-seven site plan, twenty seventeen site plan, thank you so much for that. That's the first time you gave good information. Um, and the new proposed site plan, I'm just kidding. Kidding with you. Um, there's an increase in space. So where's the reduction? I'm trying to figure out where this twenty percent-
Saying the reduction comes from the current use of the land, not from, not compared to 2017, but compared to today.
Today.
The, the new site plan that's being proposed is giving, is giving them eighty percent or twenty percent reduction of what they're currently using as, uh, land side space for their exhibition.
Okay, I think I understood that before I asked the question. The twenty seventeen site plan, I'm talking about the twenty seventeen site plan, not what they use today, which is not developer, developed, does not have the proposed 2017 buildings and reallocation of space for buildings and the boat show. Now we have a new proposed site plan-
Right.
That you like, that's gonna increase the percentages, am I correct? That's what I'm talking about.
Over seventeen, correct.
Seventeen to, to the new proposed, that's all I'm talking about.
That, right. You're right.
Thank you for that.
Okay, very good. Let's move on. Okay, thank you, Andrew. Janet, thank you for your patience. Janet, followed by Ann Hilmer, followed by, um, uh, well, Andrew, we just heard from you, so Paula Yunka. Hello, Janet.
Good afternoon, Commission. Again, I have my two-minute thing perfectly planned and I have to add, um, some comments about, uh, what the mayor said at the beginning of the session. I take some exception to some of what he said. And since we're basing everything off of those, I feel like I have to say that. However, I would still like to say what I was gonna say. It does, I, first of all, I think we all know that the commissionsers can meet privately with whoever. So I don't think we have confusion. There might be some now in the public, but the active people know that. So that's not an issue. However, it does not have to be members of the commission who are negotiating the lease. Uh, you should give direction on the kinds of things you want to make sure get included in the lease, but you can give that to city staff. The problem with you being the one who, if, if this is what's happening, designing the lease, then of course you're gonna like it because you're gonna be invested and they were your ideas. And so you're not gonna be critical, um, at the level you would be if it was just presented to you with all of your ideas thrown in there for consideration. So number one. And number two, we keep acting like this 2017 thing is going to happen if we don't do something else. And I think that that's incorrect. The tenant came to us earlier this year. They said they didn't want to build that anymore. They had, they wanted, they would start from scratch. They were totally open to every idea. So I don't think it's fair to say a hundred percent-
Janet, that's not true.
It is true, I was hearing-
No, it's not true. That's not true, Janet.
I heard-
We have to start talking about facts. That's not true.
Okay, well, I heard them say that they would start from scratch. Everything was on the table. I heard that. Was everything on the table?
Well, just continue, Janet. Jan, just continue, Ms. Scraper. Please continue.
Anyway, so I'll just go on.
Give you an extra minute because, uh-
An extra minute, okay.
Oh, Steve says something.
And also, we're the landlord, why aren't we the one, um, coming up with the lease? So anyway, despite the fact that there's overwhelming public opposition to private ownership of public lands, here we are, um, to review a hundred-year lease to do just that. I again ask that you do not allow private ownership on our most valuable asset, Bahiamar. The stated purpose of this property when it was acquired by the citizens seventy-four years ago was a municipal recreation area anchored by a marina. If you are still dead set on letting condos being built on the property, please consider the process and proposal that will be put forth by Gary Cotton in which the city sells a portion of land to developer and retains the remainder for public purses. Also, please pay attention to the process of valuation he outlines to ensure the city is compensated fairly. I hope we don't get to the point where we're actually considering the details of this lease, but if we do, please pay close attention to the details restricting public access and the tenant control of the site that this lease allows. I'll stop there.
All right, great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Mayor, I just want to correct one more statement.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I, in my meetings, Janet, I, I've never been negotiating a lease. You said that it's wrong for people that are negotiating a lease that are gonna then decide later at a different point in time. Please understand, I have not negotiated a lease.
Nor have I.
Thank you. My goal, my goal in my meetings with both the boat show and the tenant has always been about getting rid of that awful 2017 site plan. That's been my goal. So those were always my discussions, those were always my approaches. And also, my goal was to try and see if we could figure out a way where the boat show and the tenant could come together and work together and just change that dynamic that's been going on over the years. So that was always what I tried to do in my meetings. And that's all that ever happened in, in our meetings. I leave all of these documents that we have in front of us today, this whole big binder of documents, I leave this to the city attorney, I leave the financial aspects, reviewing the economics, to the city auditor. And then our city staff will take, take over. And when this eventually becomes a site plan, it will go through our city staff, DRC, planning and zoning, and the commission. So again, I, I, you know, again, it started off with the mayor talking about the Sun Sentinel editorial, many misstatements there. We have to be so careful not to perpetuate misinformation. So please understand, I have not negotiated any lease.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Ann Hilmer, hi. And Paula Yunka, followed by Jerry Jordan.
Okay, I, excuse me. I gave a copy of the letter to Jeff that was sent to you, all the commissioners, in mid-November following our dissatisfaction with the, with the changes in the, in the city commission's approach to Bahiamar. In, in March, nine months ago, three of you sat here on this stand and said you were opposed to condos on public land. And as a result of the change in your beliefs or your stand, the Idlewild Association sent a letter to all five of you. I speak on behalf of the Idlewild Association today. Not Mary, I'm the representative for that today. Just to let you know that I want to remind you that we felt very strongly, if, if you were going to start down the process of, of doing condos, that you should sell off that front piece of property and renegotiate it. And that's what the letter refers to.
So you're suggesting, so the Idlewild Association wants us to sell-
Yeah, we sent this letter to you in mid-November, yes.
So-
It said, given the parameters of current Bahiamar negotiations, Jeff has the copies for all of you. The city shall explore selling the eastern end of the property in exchange for terminating the lease on the remainder of the property to the west. The city shall retain ownership in full of the land on the west portion along with the marina lease. A perimeter road and walkway will be built around the property. The, the ownership of the perimeter road shall be maintained, retained by the city and a consultant shall be retained to determine the tenant's value in the property. This was signed by both Mary- This was signed by both Mary Furtig and Ann Hilmer on March 16th of 2021. I have a couple more comments. I have been speaking to this commission on behalf of, on the, on the subject of Bahia Mar and previous ones since 2008. So I'm hoping I will be briefed today. This is just so wrong on eight, on so many counts, and let me give you eight examples. Public space for public lands, you don't have to grant new leases. No condos on public land, the stand that you three took, three of you took on, in March of 2021. Maximize space and opportunities for the boat show. Environmental issues, including the problems of building on a barrier island, sea level rising, et cetera. Negotiations to grant a new lease and extension on property that's already been given a new lease and extension. This, this city historically has not negotiated well on this land. Adding 800-plus cars a day to roads that are already failing. And why is a tenant drafting the, the lease documents for the city to respond to? That seems to be backward, and an indication that we as a city are being reactive rather than proactive on this gem of our city land. Why is everything, quote, "offered by the developer for us to respond to"? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I guess that idea of selling a portion of the land, we can only, can only evaluate that if we get on a, once we get the appraisal, right?
Well, two things.
Yeah.
Three things. One, there has to be an evaluation, you're right.
Right.
Number two, the tenant has to be interested in selling.
Right.
Three, we have to have the money to buy it.
Yep.
So what do you mean by that, Mayor? When you say the tenant has to be willing to sell?
Because they would have to forego their balance of their lease.
So we don't have that right? Is that what you're saying?
They do own the land, but it's subject to their lease.
But we don't have the right to offer?
We, we have the right to offer, but they've not accepted that offer.
So the only way we can do that is if the tenant comes and says, hey, this is what we want to do.
Correct.
Well, we can offer it. We can.
Well, it has been offered.
Yeah, buying, buying a portion of the land has been offered?
The, the purchase of the land, I mean, we already own them, so it's basically purchasing the lease back.
But we, we can't do that, can we?
We, we, we can't force them to do that, correct?
Right, right. So we can't do that, basically, unless they say, hey.
It's not an option, right?
Says, hey, I want to, you know, sell this piece or break it up into pieces or.
Well, I mean, anything is, as.
And I agree with you.
Anything's on the table, but I can tell you right now, and I've, and I've really disclosed everything that's been discussed, and, and, and I can tell you that the, the, the offer to buy out their lease has not been accepted by the tenant. So we're, we're really at the point where we're, where we're just trying to negotiate.
What's in front of us?
Want to extend their lease to allow them to build condos. That's where we're at right now. Okay.
If I ask that question to him, I got the same answer. I'm just, I'm just trying to do everything that everybody's trying to do.
Every single one of your questions, Mayor, so, you know, never hold back.
Again, Mayor, just to be clear, there's buying out the lease, which is another option, right, that you just talked about.
But they've, they've not, they've not agreed to accept the, buy out.
I know. I'm just, I'm just saying that's an option, but they don't, they don't want to take right now, which is great.
Right.
And then another option is this idea of, after the valuation, saying, hey, here's what the land's worth, so maybe we sell this portion of the land to you, you know, and so forth.
Right, that, that's already been discussed in generalities.
Sorry?
That's already been discussed in general.
Oh, you've already talked with them about it.
There's no, there's no interest in that.
No interest. Okay, cool. Thanks.
And we don't, I don't know whether, even if they had the interest, even if we took the $218 million, as the 2016 appraisal said, if we wanted to buy out that portion, or buy out the portion.
Right.
You know, or if they want, or if they wanted to buy that portion, I don't know whether they have the money to do that.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Looking at maybe, you know, 170 million?
Just throwing out all options. All good. All right.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Paula.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I am certainly not as knowledgeable as a lot of speakers you'll hear today, and I certainly don't know the legalities of the Bahia Mar lease. I can only speak as a longtime resident of Fort Lauderdale Beach, and as most of you know, an avid walker. The landscape of Fort Lauderdale has changed drastically in the 25-plus years I've lived here, in some good ways and some bad ways. I know you can't stop development, but let's try to have some smart development. I think one thing we can all agree on is there is so little public land left. Please use it wisely. If possible, the only fair thing would be to put it to a vote, let the people decide what to do with this precious parcel of land. There is no perfect solution, but please keep as much wide-open space as possible for residents and visitors to enjoy for generations to come. Thank you.
I agree with you, Paula. I think we all agree with you.
Thank you.
All right, Jerry Jordan, followed by Nancy Thomas, followed by Barry. I can't, is this your, did you write this? It doesn't say anything in English. Is that you?
Yep, that's me.
Okay.
But could I state something?
Yes.
I don't want to belabor it, as you said, saying less is more. I just wanted to.
Well, all right, this is not the appropriate opportunity, so, so when it's your turn, you can, you can assist the commissioner and the rest of us with your comments. So, hi, Jerry.
Hi, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, afternoon, Commissioners. I just, everybody said pretty much everything that I had in my notes here, but I'd like to say just one or two things. Number one, the lease, I've been a longtime landlord, I'm a longtime resident, and I'm just surprised we're talking about a lease that, you know, no tenant has ever brought me a lease. It's the other way around. And the other thing is, I'm a little confused, Commissioner, you said, we need an appraisal. We need to know what those things cost before we can talk about leases. I mean, these are things, as a longtime landlord, I'm a little confused on. And another thing I'm wondering about is, when all these condominiums get built over there, if you give it to condominium, what's going to happen if they put pressure on in 20 years or so to extend the lease further? My, my opinion is, we don't give any public land away at all, including over here, the one-stop shop, please. I want it for my kids and grandchildren. How you tweak it in between, you know, we got to keep the boat show, but if you can do anything else, a couple condos or whatever, everybody's off the land in 2061, would be my humble opinion. So, thank you very much.
So you should, so you, so it's your opinion then, that we should just let them go ahead and build their project now? And, and let, and then at the end of 42 years or 41 years, just take back the site?
Yeah.
Okay, what happens if it displaces most of the boat show? What are you thinking there?
Well, if you take down the buildings, then there would be, if you take down the buildings, Mayor, wouldn't there be a lot of room for the boat show?
But they're going to add, they're, they're adding, is it 13 buildings, Commissioner Glassman?
I think it's 15.
15 buildings, according to the current site plan, which, which displaces most of the land side of the, of the property.
I hear that. What, what's to say that 50 or 100 people in the condominiums won't come here in 2030, 2040, and yell at you and say, we want to extend the lease?
Hey.
We won't be here, but I mean.
I won't be here, God.
I won't either, Dean, no.
You won't have to hear me 30 years from now.
You won't hear me either. Anyway, yeah.
Lucky everyone.
You get a whole group of people organized.
All right, your time's up.
Mayor, what's the answer to why this hasn't been built so far? Is there, have you heard that? Why hasn't it been built? Why hasn't the 2017?
First of all, they've gone in for permitting. They, I mean, they, there was a delay because of permitting. Then there was a delay because of COVID, okay? And, but now I believe they're, they're, they can go ahead and tell me, Commissioner.
The Marina, the Marina Village portion on the south finger has been all permitted already, and that could happen any day, because, I mean, we, we could ask them, but they did go in, they received all those permits.
I know. That's why I'm asking, why? Why, if it's all been permitted, why haven't they built yet?
Well, I think the permits were just recently granted.
Oh, just like.
For the Marina Village.
So it just happened.
On the south finger, yeah.
Yeah, if you saw the DRC comments, they're pages.
Okay.
I mean, there was a lot. I happened to see them a couple of years ago.
So it just got, okay, so they're now just finally able to build?
Yes.
Thanks.
Nancy Thomas, followed by Barry, followed by Mary Furtig.
Good afternoon, hi. My point is one that I haven't heard discussed, and I have point, I have sent it in an email to the commission. And that is, if you allow condos to be built on public property, essentially selling that portion of the property for 100 years, what is going to stop developers from coming to this commission and wanting to do the same on other public property, like Holiday Park, Mills Pond Park, Snyder Park, Coral Ridge Park, all our parks, any and all of our parks? Nobody has responded to this possibility. Why, why not? I mean, this is, this would set a terrible precedent. I've heard, and I understand, you're fearful that Tavas, oops, sorry, Ron Bahia Mar is going to build the 2017 version. I don't think that's going to happen. I mean, it's been five, going on six years, and we're only as far as the Marina Village. And if they were so keen to.
It's actually only been three, because it was December of 17, so you have 18, 19, 20, 21, so four years.
Four years, four years, okay. But if they were, they've come back with this different proposal, but it requires condos. So what's wrong with the 2017? Why did they come back with something else that includes condos? In other words, they must not be that interested, I'm assuming, in the 2017 version. But that's beside the point, except that you're using it as a touchstone, touchstone for what to do next. What about the precedent of allowing condos on public property? I'd like an answer from the commission on this. The other point is, that needs to be explored. I know the, the attorney said, well, we'll have it written into the sales contracts that the condo owners can't protest the boat show, yada, yada. Well, you know as well as I do, contracts are challenged all the time. And we're talking about hundreds of condo owners. It's not in, this does not seem to be in the best interests of the city just because it reduces the number of buildings compared to 2017. And, as others have said, there is no reason in the world to limit the boat show in any way. And I, I'm really concerned that, that the percentages people are throwing around are not clearly understood. 10%, 20%, better than this, not as good as that. This really needs to be clarified. But mainly, I want to know about the precedent of building, allowing condos on publicly owned land. Without the public having a referendum on such a thing.
Okay, thank you.
And to me, the answer is, maybe the tenant's not interested in buying out the lease, but we have not publicly explored selling part of the property. Everything has a price. There might be something there, and that has not been publicly discussed as far as I know. I've been to every meeting.
I can tell you right now that Dean Trantalis is not interested in selling public land.
Well, that's fine, but what about the other commission?
I'm not in favor of selling public land.
Oh, but you are selling public land to condo owners.
Absolutely not.
To condo owners.
Absolutely not.
That's what's happening.
It's not debated.
Okay, what about the precedent? Let's talk about the precedent.
This is, okay, you posed the question. At some point, the commission will discuss that, but this is not a question answered.
I'm not in favor of building any residential units in any of our parks. This is not a park, but I, I would never be in favor of building residential units in Holiday Park, all those parks you mentioned.
It's publicly owned land.
Right, but I'm just telling you I'm not in favor.
Designation, and you can't build condos.
Right, it's a whole different situation.
I would like to know more about that.
Okay, we'll teach you more, but I just want you to know that, that you cannot build condos in parks.
Correct. So don't worry about that precedent.
Alan Wallow, can you build condos in parks?
Well, not, not right off the bat, no. Yeah, and, and again, let me make a note also on the conversations with regards to selling part of the property. As you know, we have a charter provision in that, so we can't just directly sell to these tenants or to the lessees. We'd have to put it out under 804, essentially, to, to bid, and you'd have to take the best offer. So it's not like you can directly sell to who you want. You'd have to sell to the best bidder.
Alan, would that even be feasible to sell a parcel of that entire peninsula that is like, not even on a end of the parcel, like, just sort of like in between everything else and right in the middle? And could that even be done?
It gets difficult. It would have to be, we, we have certain regulations under the ULDR, and Anthony can speak to it, but it has to be a developable parcel, obviously, that would have to be replating potentially involved. So there's, it's not impossible, but you'd have a process to go through, and you couldn't guarantee who would buy it.
Okay. Who, New River, New River Landing, New River Condos, is that on public land?
It's on Broward County property.
Broward County property. Are there any condos right now in Fort Lauderdale on public land that's Fort Lauderdale land?
Did they convert to rentals, or at one point they were condos and converted to rentals, or vice versa? New River, they're condos now.
Which are condos?
New River was, New River was built as rentals, but converted to condos, I think, right off the bat.
And that's Fort Lauderdale land?
No, that's county.
Broward County.
That's county public land?
They have a 99-year lease with Broward County.
And is there any Fort Lauderdale public land where there's residential?
Not that I'm aware of. Does county? Okay.
Well, get ready, because I think that will happen. I really believe that.
All right.
Is the housing, is the housing trust land considered city property, like, that's not considered public?
It's their part, the housing trust, I mean, the housing authority.
Well, I'm thinking of Point Sienna Crossing.
That's the housing authority, correct?
That's the Broward County Housing Authority. It's not the, that's not the Fort Lauderdale. It's affordable housing.
But like Broadview would, Broad, I'm just trying to.
That goes to the housing authority. They're, they're own entity.
Once it's in housing authorities, this question of zoning is a good one, I think, too. What's the, what's the zoning for Bahia Mar?
That I'd have to defer to Anthony.
SBMHA.
And what's, what does that allow for?
South Beach Marina Hotel Area. It's always been primarily a marina and a hotel area. The zoning is specifically hotel and marina.
Okay, and does that, does that zoning allow for the 2021 site plan?
Yes, it does. In fact, if you look at the actual documents that go way back, residential is always mentioned in all of the documents that we have on the site, as a, as a use on the site.
So all that, the staff has vetted that, or that's all clear?
We don't have a site plan, the new site plan hasn't been submitted, so staff has not evaluated the current site plan. I mean, obviously, there've been some lucidations and conversations, but no formal evaluation of the new site plan's been made.
Okay, but they can go, they can build residential high there, I guess, is what you're.
Well, that's two different things. One allows residential as to the height, there, there, there possibly restrictions there. I don't know what those are. Again, I'd have to defer to Ms. Farber.
Are we going to do, when does that kind of analysis? Because as we talk about the.
When we have a site plan to review.
DRC process.
Okay. But I'm just, so as we think about this site plan, it just seems we're putting a lot of emphasis on this site plan. And I just want to make sure it's a viable zoning, I guess, site plan is my question, I guess.
Well, as part of the lease documents now, the site plan would be approved by the city as lessor. So we have two hats, right? We have the ownership hat, and we have the regulatory hat. So, site plan approval, DRC, all that is the regulatory process. Under the lease, we as owners and the lessors would approve a conceptual site plan that would be attached to that lease. But the actual into-the-weeds calculations and all of that would be done through the regulatory process, a separate process.
Okay, would we have to change any of the zoning there?
I don't know, because I don't have a site plan.
Okay, so we don't, we just don't know, and we won't know until official site plans. So, and then what do you do? Do you legally, can you, you can't make a contingent on approval. In other words, what happens if we strike a deal, but then the site, the zoning is not approved?
Well, the, the lease, the way it's written now, again, everything's subject to change, the way it's written now, the lease would be bound, essentially would be contingent on ownership approval, lessor approval of site plan that's attached.
Zoning.
As to whether it's feasible. So let's say, I don't know how many stories it would be, but let's say the, you know, it accommodates one versus the other. The, the lease is written in a way, again, currently, that allows, obviously, some minor deviations in that regard because of those very issues that may come up, but they would have to stay conceptually as proposed and attached to the lease.
Interesting. So if the, if the commission doesn't approve the site plan or the zoning changes, then the deal falls apart?
No, your lease is still going to be there, it's just that particular building won't be able to be built. So I'll, I'll use an example. Let's say, I hate to use examples, because people freak out, but, okay, let's use 10 stories, for example. Let's say it only allows 10 stories, and they're proposing 12 stories, right? So when you go through the DRC process, it'll be known that if you want a building there, it's going to have to be 10 stories. And I presume they've done their own due diligence, and they've worked out what needs to occur and not occur. But it wouldn't change the master lease or the phase leases or anything of that sort. But then you would get into the construction aspect of it, and they could only build what the code allows. and they could only build what the code allows. Or the code would have to be changed in order to accommodate. Or you'd do a PDD or something like that that would accommodate the zoning change.
Got you. Okay, so the site plan that we're hypothetically talking about probably is going to change dramatically. I mean, this is going to be all kinds of stuff.
Well, no, that's not accurate. Because once you come to an agreement on your lease, your master lease, there will be a provisional site plan there that they're going to have to stick to. There's going to be some deviations here and there. So as you know, through the DRC process, they may have to have a little bit more asphalt over here, because they're going to have to have a loading zone. Or, you know, there's tweaks and things that happened during DRC that inevitably will occur. So there's obviously room for those types of changes. But from the standpoint of the site plan proposed, conceptually and overall, it's going to have to remain pretty much true to form as it is presented with the lease.
It's going to have to remain true to form. Yeah, I'm still trying to just wrap my head around.
If they have, let's say, eight buildings, they're not going to all of a sudden build 15 buildings. I'm sorry?
That just requires a zoning change, hypothetically.
No, what I'm trying to say is, let's say they provide, similar to what they've provided for with regards to the boat show. Okay? We're going to have the site plan this way, eight buildings. They're not going to all of a sudden be able to deviate and say, "Well, we're going to build 15 buildings now." They can't change it to that extent. But there is going to be some minor change, as with any development, that we approve either through a comprehensive agreement or a development agreement or anything else. There's always room for some changes, because the DRC process will reveal some things. Regardless, perhaps with parking, a variety of other things, where there's going to have to be some tweaks made, which is part of the whole DRC and regulatory process. But the goal here is going to be to bind the lessor as much as possible to the conceptual plan, that site plan that's going to be attached to the lease.
Got you. And to make sure that site plan's effective and appropriate and so forth, we would have to do a full staff analysis of it, right?
At the end of the day, pre-develop, yeah, you'd have to do a full site to have assurances on everything, to say, "Okay, we're going to start digging today, and it's going to be exactly how it's been proposed." You'd have to have a fully approved site plan that's gone through the whole regulatory process.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying before that. I'm saying when you're... You're saying when you're drafting the lease, you have to have very great specificity around what the plan is, right?
Certain specificity. But, well, not always. In this case, we're going to. But certain specificity, yes. But a lot of that specificity will not come out until you go through the regulatory process, which is after the fact.
Right, which is after the fact, right. Yeah. So which could lead to significant changes in the site plan.
Again, back to my point, significant is sort of misleading, because they are going to be bound by a certain site plan design. So by significant, if you say, "Okay, we're going to add three buildings, because we think that's more feasible," that's not going to happen, because that's not... That's going to be way beyond what we've approved as owners. Now, again, they have to add a loading dock. That's going to be a change. It's going to occur, because that's something we would have not necessarily foreseen, but having gone through the regulatory DRC process.
Right. So again, staff will have to do a full evaluation of... To make sure the site plan works, before it goes through the regulatory process, to make sure that it's, you know...
That's part... That is the regulatory process.
Chris, am I making sense, or I don't know?
No, the DRC process is the regulatory process.
But that comes after the lease.
Correct. As a part of any routine development. So we'll hopefully get to a place that if the commission chooses to amend and bring forward a modified lease, there will be an attending site plan. And what the attorney's saying, so that's what will enter the DRC process. And what Alan's, I think, describing is that nothing ever enters the DRC process and exits it looking exactly the same.
Absolutely.
But you're not going to see significant differences.
Got you. And so to make sure...
As a perfect example, War Memorial, right? We've entered into a lease with War Memorial. We did not, prior to entering that lease, approve a fully-vetted site plan that went through DRC and has final approval for construction. Right? That deal came through before. So there's never... You're never going to have someone commit to a lease after they've gone through the full site plan approval, because at that point in time, you can say, "Okay, never mind." And they've gone through that entire, millions and millions of dollars of expense. So we typically come to a deal with scope and confines as to what's going to be built. So again, using War Memorial as the example, we had a very good picture, very good idea of exactly what it is they wanted to build. But it was conceptual, right? We didn't go measuring. We don't know about the loading docks. We don't know about those various things. That's occurring now and through that process.
And so I'm assuming with War Memorial, city staff and Anthony's department really works on that site plan before, you know, with War Memorial?
Not before the lease. We entered into the lease before they even started doing it. I mean, conceptually, we had an idea as to what they wanted to do. They wanted to build two sheets of ice, go ahead and improve the... Renovate the War Memorial.
Staff doesn't do anything prior to?
Not until they have a site plan to review.
Okay, all right. That's interesting.
Another, just an example, and I'll make up an example. So War Memorial has a circular drive right in the front of it, a drop-off lane, right? And so on the site plan, there's going to be depicted a drop-off lane. It enters Anthony's shop, and an engineer looks at it and realizes that the city's biggest fire truck can't make the turning movement of the driveline, of the drop-off lane. So as a part of the process, the engineers will tweak and make sure that...
Right, I get it.
That it's still... In the end, it's still going to have a circular drop-off lane. It's just going to look different than it may have entered, because the way it entered, it just didn't work.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
And part of it also, I may add, in the lease, there are some contractual language, so the number of units, right? So there are some things that will constrain the development further beyond just the schematics that you're going to have. But there are components to it that are going to be built into the language that also constrains the lessor, I'm sorry, the lessor in this case, and what they can develop.
So it's just up to us as a commission to figure out with them, as we're discussing this lease, like, what's a good building on that site? City staff doesn't get involved in all, any of that.
Of course, yeah, they do through the regulatory process.
Before DRC, I'm saying when we're working on the lease.
Right, but you don't... It would be very atypical. I mean, you can conceptually, but you're not going to design the building prior to the lease.
No, but we're going to...
That happens through the DRC.
When do you sign the lease? Do you sign the lease after DRC? Sorry, I'm just... You've signed it before?
Yeah.
Right, so you signed it before. So there's a general site plan included in the lease, right?
Conceptually, right.
Great.
They're going to tell you... They're going to be bound by the language as to, again, number of units, number of buildings, so on and so forth.
So that general site plan, we get to come up with, with them, right?
They're going to come up with the site plan.
And we say we like it, we don't like it, right? We can, hey, do this different.
But it's all up to them. It's their site plan. It's not your site plan. So they're going to submit that to you. Of course, you all have discourse, and they can possibly modify it. But ultimately, it's what they submit to our staff to work on.
Yeah. But that's what, yeah, Mayor Glassman and Commissioner Glassman have been working on. It's getting a site plan that's right. That's good. Okay, so that's part of the process. Cool. Okay, I just had to understand the process. I didn't know all of this, how this all plays out.
Add it to the process, so thank you.
Thanks.
Barry, did you want to... Is there something you wanted to say to anyone? Okay. Mary, foretake, followed by Heather Brinkworth, followed by Erin McNeil.
Good afternoon. This is going to be somewhat random in response to some of the things I've heard today. First of all, I just have to go back to the conversation with Nancy. I think if you look at the current lease, it doesn't say residential. I think it uses the words apartments, which is hence how we got to where we got in 2017. I'm glad Steve brought up the December 5, 2017 lease quotes from the minutes, because that's exactly how I remember it happening. I'm glad the minutes captured that. On is this a sale of the land? Every attorney I have talked to that deals with land use and real estate for the last, I don't know how many years, has told me that a 100-year lease is the equivalent, in the eyes of the IRS and the financial community, of the sale of the land. I don't know whether your attorneys have a different opinion, but I guess that's something to be considered in another venue. So let me go to the fact of how you started. We have been repeatedly accused, I have been repeatedly accused, whether it's Lockhart, whether it's One Stop, whether it's Behiamar, of promulgating lies, misinformation, and disinformation. It just really feels to me like anytime I say something you all don't like, I get accused of promulgating lies, misinformation. Now, I could say the same thing, because I've heard some misinformation today, which I'll be glad to annotate for you. But as many of you know, if I have a fault, it's that I research things to death, and I can usually back up with documents pretty much anything I'm saying. With that, I'm glad you brought up December 5, 2017, because we've watched the boat show in this position many times, where they've gotten up here and said things that they may not necessarily 100% agree with. Because if there's one thing I've learned since this started is that they are under, for want of a better word, a gag order. Now, we heard they weren't under a gag order. What I would say to you is, you're the ultimate owner of the land. You are the landlord. Why don't you tell your tenant that you are not letting them gag any of the people who have subleases? Why don't we do that? Let's get it in writing. Let's make it public, so everybody in the public knows that when the boat show walks up here, whatever they say is what they believe, and that it is in no way restricted by a redacted lease. I want to...
To that point, I think it was cleared... It was cleared up last meeting that they're under no gag order to speak their mind at a commission meeting. So anything that's said here is, you know, unfettered. And if they have anything to say, this would be the place to say it, so...
So could you get that in... Well, I don't know that it should just be in this room, but can you get that in writing? Could you make that...
It was said in the public.
Have it in writing, that there is no restriction to what they say.
There is no restrictions to what they say in a public forum. And I believe Mr. Tate's here, who can confirm that. And Mr. Lock... Mr. Lockery, you've also confirmed that. And if...
All right, here, let me walk away, so they can walk up and confirm that. Okay.
But Mary, also, you're implying that the boat show, either in December of 2017 or even now, is coming up to the podium and speaking untruths. And I don't believe that they would do that.
I believe they're in a very difficult position.
But no one's forcing them to come up here and say anything. But why would you think that they would come up here and lie?
Mr. Lockery, could you come up to the podium?
You can't get an unredacted copy of the boat show basis, I'm sure you're aware.
Can you reiterate the position of the group that you represent?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kenny Tate, representing the applicant. Pursuant to the boat show lease that has been provided to each of the commissioners, the provision, there is no gag order. It's only that they must speak in public if they're speaking to the commission. They can say whatever they want.
Okay. Thank you. That was my understanding of this meeting.
Is that unredacted in the current lease? Because all we've been able to get through public records request is redacted copies of the lease. Do I understand that the commission has received unredacted copies of the lease?
I have not received an unredacted copy.
Have you seen an unredacted? No? Okay. Okay. Oh, yes, sorry.
The only provisions that were redacted were dollars and cents. There were no narrative provisions redacted in the entire lease.
No other substantive positions?
Only dollars and cents. That's the only thing that was redacted.
Okay.
So the entire narrative provision as to what Mary is calling the gag order is exhibited in the redacted version.
Okay. Thank you. You may continue, Mary.
Okay. And then I would assume there is nothing other than, at least no other agreement that they've done that has required them to not be able to say certain things. I don't really believe it should just have to occur in this room. I think that, truthfully, they ought to be free to speak. But we know how I am on the First Amendment. Why are you waiting for the tenant to make proposals on what is preventing you from... I mean, I've heard you say, "Well, they didn't suggest that. They didn't suggest that." Why can't you all suggest?
No, we had... No, that was not what was said. What was said was, the subject has come up, and there was no interest in responding to it.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the tape and get this verbatim. But I believe what was said, not just... I'm not just speaking on buying the land. I'm talking about on several other things that Commissioner Sorensen raised today. It was, they haven't brought that to us.
What in particular?
Go back and watch the tape, it's okay. So I don't want to go through everything that he went through earlier today, but I believe what was stated was that they had not brought those to you. And what I'm saying is, why can't you bring that to them?
Well, let's go... Well, wait a minute, I remember what they are. I don't need the tape to remind me. The first thing that Commissioner Sorensen asked was about the sale of the land. And the subject had come up. And now we're hearing, actually, additional information from our city attorney that it would have to go out to public bid. So whether we offered it to them, or whether we offered it to the public, I do know that it had been brought up in discussions, and there was no interest in buying the land. So I just want you to be aware of that. Secondly, there was a question about buying out the lease. And that offer was made directly to the applicant, and there was no interest on their part in accepting any money to buy out the lease. So I just want to put that on the record, so there's no suggestion that it's all coming from the applicant, and we're not being proactive. We are being proactive.
Okay, so if I were to find something on the tape, then you would be able to perhaps take that to them?
Well, I'm telling you now, whether it was said on the tape or not, I'm just telling you... Well, I'm telling you now, whether it was said on the tape or not, I'm just telling you...
I'm not going to tell you right now because I'm going to go back and actually watch, I'm going to go back and actually watch the tape and, okay. So, I just want to point out, we've only had a few days to look at these documents and we really did not know what to expect when we got here today. And so, it sounds like it's a very reasonable approach that you're taking, that you're taking more time and, and going through these. I know that many people have questioned, questions about a lot of parts of this and in addition to what you're doing in here, because you all are having private meetings with the attorney, I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial for the city to hold like a, a public, like a workshop. You all don't have to be here, but just where they can talk to the city manager and the city attorney and get answers to questions so we don't take up so much time with public speaking trying to get answers to things that might be, or information. I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion. I think you're, you've already caught one of the things that concerned us when we read this. The city manager, too many restrictions, has too much, has too much authority under this authority which should go to the Commission, too many restrictions on public land access. The, the rent, I would encourage you to look at the presentation right now. Accounted in the rent is 4.25% revenue sharing with the hotel. That's what you're getting right now. That's what you're getting in the new lease. I would just be going through those figures and seeing whether or not you're really getting that much more. I have, then I'm going to put into the record the letter that, from Lauderdale tomorrow that was sent on November 16th and also most recently, a letter by, from Gary Cotton that was, I think you all received, but I'll put it in the record of this meeting, a proposal, an expansion of the proposal that we made in November. One last question. I hear how many people want things to happen. So, I say to you, why don't you put this to the voters? Let's put it to the voters what the future of this piece of public property is and let them decide. And I've heard in here that you would never, ever build anything on a park, but I heard you'd never build condos on public land. So, now I'm really concerned that with anything in life, that can change and that's fine. I change, I change as I get more information. I think that's fine. But I would tell you that I think ultimately, this land was bought by vote of, by a vote of the voters. I say, "Let's put it to them and see and then any of us lives with the result." Also want to say, and this is, and it's a busy time, Mr. Tate, so I don't take this the wrong way. Someone told me that it was suggested that we had never talked to Mr. Tate or talked to him about, you know, "Why don't we sit down or if there's any, if you ever want to talk, come to us." And I think you would say that you, we had that conversation November 16th. I walked up to you and said, "We're across the bridge. We're neighbors. Anytime you want to talk, we're happy to talk. We'll come to you, you come to us." But I would just still say, I, it pains me to come to these meetings and see how fractured as a community we are and I would hope that there were a way that we could come together. There's a lot more I can say, but you'll probably just get letters from me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think part of the fracturing is, as I've been able to witness it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a lot of it has to do with misinformation and a lot of people think that like every option is on the table when in fact it's not, at least what I've been able to understand. So, if we can focus on the options that are available and narrow the issues, I think we'd get a lot more accomplished and we'd have a lot less community anxiety if we realize what the options were and I think that's been the process. We've been bringing to the community at each meeting what the options are, what the proposals are, and then to get feedback from the community. And again, this is, in all the years I've been on this Commission, it's the first time I've ever seen so much time and effort put into addressing these issues and trying to bring focus and then ultimately trying to bring closure to what I think is ultimately going to be in the best interest of this community. Heather Brinkworth followed by Erin McNeil followed by Lander McNeil.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Heather Brinkworth and I am here today to ask you to ensure you meet your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers you represent by constructing a comprehensive agreement based on a current full appraisal on the Bahia Mar property we own and to carefully consider the long-term ramifications of the direction you provide to staff regarding our public land. Amongst my different circles of friends who are residents of our city, I have presented the scenario you are considering for our public lands and to a person, each and every one of them does not support this notion of what amounts to a lease in perpetuity nor the building of privately owned property on our public land. Additionally, everyone I have spoken with is concerned about the future of the boat show. I am asking today that if you cannot see yourself supporting the same position of protecting our public lands, that at a minimum, you negotiate from a position of power to ensure the boat show is protected and that you do not allow real property to be developed on public land. I have taken time to write to each of you on several occasions regarding this issue. I came here today to make sure you heard from the people you were elected to represent in your decision-making. I may be just one person standing before you today, but I carry with me the voices of all those citizens who don't feel empowered or comfortable to come and speak before you and those who have to work and those who are out of town and those who are caring for their out-of-school children and those who are preparing for the holidays since this is the week of Christmas. As I shared with you amongst my circles of friends, there is great skepticism about this deal. The threat of the developers moving forward with the 2017 plan seems to loom, loom over you, your thought process. Remember, they came to you wanting something different. I'm curious, if you hold firm to not allowing condos to be built on public lands, then would the developer consider a deal that allows them to purchase a portion of the land? We are the landowners. The leasing does not tell us what we will do with our land. We do through you, our Commission. Respectfully, giving away public land as it exists in today's 50-year lease is not equivalent to allowing real property that can be sold to individual homeowners to be built. Public land that is sold by the developer will no longer be public land. Perhaps the level of discourse on Bahia Mar is like no other issue that has come before the Commission during the mayor's 13-year tenure because it is a highly valuable piece of public land that, yes, you are considering giving away through a lease. If you cannot undo what has been done in the lease terms in existence today, then don't allow condos to be built on our land. Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Before you step away, before you step away, let me ask you a question. So, so with all that what you just said, what is it that you feel this Commission should do?
I feel that the Commission should take a stance that the land belongs to the public. If the developer...
The land always belongs to the public.
I understand, but the developer is coming back to you now with a compromise or a negotiation asking for you to reconsider a lease that would allow them to sell our public land. And I know you think that's not what's happening.
They're not selling public land. They're selling an ownership, a, a real estate ownership interest for, that is going to be for 99 years or 100 years. So, I just want to be specific as to the facts because a lot of what you're saying is, is a little, can be misunderstood. So far, I haven't heard anybody on this Commission, other than Commissioner Sorenson, even make the suggestion of selling title to this land to the developer.
So, let me, let me ask you...
So, when you say, when you say, when you say the things that you say, I'm, I'm trying to see if I understand what you would want this Commission to do.
I'm wanting this Commission to not allow condos to be built on this public land.
What do you want us to do?
I would prefer for you to buy out the lease.
Right. And that's not an option.
It's not an option because?
Because they're not selling. So, I mean, there are all these great things, all these great things that everyone is saying, okay? Every, I think that's a great idea. You're not the first one to come up with the idea of buying out the lease. As a matter of fact, I, I came up with it a year ago, asking them this question. It can't be as part of our initial conversation. I said, "Before we go any further," I said, "Let us buy out your lease." And they said, "No, thank you." Okay? Then we went to the next level of discussion. But the point is that I think all these things that people are talking about are great. "Let's not build this. Let's not do this. Let's sell. Let's buy." All these are great ideas, but we're not dealing from, from, as if, as if there's, as if we're starting from scratch. There is a, there is a development plan already in place and it's already approved that we now have to work with and work from. And, and, and so that's why I'm very frustrated because when I ask you this question, you, you repeat to me things that, that are slogans, they're not solutions. So, tell me, what is it that you want us to do as a Commission, given the fact that there's a, there's currently a site plan approved for, for 651 units plus a hotel plus shops plus commercial space? What would you have us do as a Commission going forward?
I would say that you say no to condos that are in this proposal.
And so, what would you have us do? So, what would you, so if we say no, say, "Forget it. Go away. We're not interested in your offer." Then you just let them just go build the 651 units on the site?
Yes, because I don't think they're going to.
But if they, but, but the possibility can exist and everybody says, "I don't think they're going to." And everyone says they can't get financing. Financing on commercial property is 20 years. Okay? After 20 years, the loans have to be paid off and now, so they go, they build their, they build their units, 20 years are up, they paid off the loans, they have another 20 years of, of income. Hey, it's not a bad deal. It's not the best deal, but it's not a bad deal and certainly commercially and bankable. So, I don't know where this rumor came out that they can't do this.
I, I'm not, I'm not basing it on anything that I've heard. What I'm saying to you is they came to you asking to do something different. There's a reason why.
I'll tell you the reason why, because they can make more money doing the other thing. There's no, it's not, it's not a, it's not rocket science to know that.
Exactly.
We all know that.
So, but do they, do they want to do what they were doing before if they're not going to have the opportunity to make as much money? Are they willing to make that investment?
Can I tell you something? Can I tell you something, Heather? Right now, you know what we're getting for lease, a lease payment on this?
It's a despicable crying shame.
It's despicable. Right. So, if, if this Commission can get more money for this land through a deal, don't you think we're, we're, we're in the, in the community's best interest to try to negotiate more money for what we feel is, is a jewel of our, of our beach? You know, people are forgetting that. If we can get $10 million instead of $1 million, isn't that better for this?
And Mayor, if, if selling our soul to the devil means that 4% of the entire property is condos, that might be a bargain that we might have to look at seriously. 4% Heather, of the entire site will be the condos. 4%.
You're including the, the docks.
Including the whole site.
Yeah, but no, yeah, the whole site.
Maybe 9%, so maybe 9% if you don't include the, maybe 9% if you don't include the water. But I'm saying still, that's, that's, that's the bargain that we would be making. That's all.
Mayor, so the, the advantage in my view, again, I know I'm a little bit of an outlier, but advantage to them building what's approved and us not extending the lease, we get the land back in 41 years. It's the cities. We own it.
But we lose the boat show in the meantime because they're going to build on the entire site.
We own it all.
We're going to lose the boat show. Don't you get it? Don't you get it?
The boat show's not going to survive in a garage, Commissioner. It's not.
Okay. So, here's another option.
What?
What if they decide they don't want to build the approved site plan?
They, that's why they're here.
Right. So, what if, what, just waxing philosophical, what if the Commission said no to extending the lease and they decided they didn't want to rebuild the, they didn't want to build the approved site plan and that maybe they would, you know, cash out and, and sell, sell, terminate the lease?
And where did you ever get that idea?
I'm just giving hypotheticals. It's the...
Well, if you want to, if you want to play chicken and just hope that, you know, say no and then just...
But do you see how they're...
Pray for that eventuality. I can tell you right now that we're going to be on the losing end of that.
Because they're going to build. So, you think they would absolutely...
Build something.
They'll absolutely build the approved site plan.
Their first permits are the two buildings on Seabreeze, which are the most obnoxious of the entire site.
Yep. Okay.
That's the problem. They've already, I believe you got permits for that.
Do you see, but you agree that, that the bargaining position of the city increases?
When? How?
When you decline a lease extension. Are you with me on that?
Well, we'll, we'll go with that. We'll continue your discussion.
So, then the city is in a stronger place of power to the, while they may not be interested right now in terminating lease, that appetite would increase, I think, with terminating with...
So, how would that, how would that appetite to, how would that appetite to renegotiate the lease? How, how tempting would that be to them after they've built their first two buildings?
So, it'd be more tempting than now. It'd be more tempting now because the profit center, you're saying they make more money with the 2021 site plan. So, the profit is diminished with the 2017 site plan that they would move.
That's, that's my estimation.
Right. I believe, I agree with you. I agree with you. So, that's, so that's part of the...
But we lose the boat show. Don't forget that then.
So, we don't lose the boat show. The boat show is saying it's a significant impact to 2017 plan, but again, Commissioner Glassman said this, that the boat show is, is okay with the 2017 plan.
Well, that was because they were...
If they're okay, then we don't lose it.
Well, if you, you may recall when they were here at the last meeting and they stood at that podium, that any letters or expression of, of interest in that 2017 plan was under duress. They told you that. They spoke right to your eyes. You were standing right there and they said, "We had to say that."
Okay.
They were legally required to say that. Don't forget that. So, those are all false statements.
Okay.
Okay? That they admit.
Okay. So, we say they weren't happy with this. So, when Commissioner Glassman says they're happy, we're disagree, we're saying they're not happy.
Because I sat in that chair at 3:00 in the morning.
I'm good with that.
And I saw them and they, and they, they, you know, it was, they grudgingly had to...
Sure.
To commit to it.
Again, I'm just trying to be a, 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 a business person in the best interest of, of the city. That's all. I'm not casting dispersions.
Looking at one thing, I'm looking at one thing.
Trying to be greedy for the city.
That is saving the boat show. If we can't save the boat show, then we've sunk our opportunities.
So, okay, great. So, let's get the boat, boat show, can someone from the boat show come up here?
Mayor, also, now that you mentioned the word sunk, I think that's exactly what will happen to the peninsula in 41 years if we do nothing. What we're also forgetting here, and this is something very important to me, we're forgetting, and I guess Heather's not there anymore, but when we talk about the public purpose, the condominium part of this project pays for all of the public improvements. We're talking probably about $60 million. We're talking about seawall. We're talking about raising the structures. We're talking about all of the infrastructure. We're talking about a boardwalk around the whole peninsula. There's probably $50 to $60 million that needs to be paid by whom? Who, who's paying for that? So, if we revert back to rentals, which could happen, as I said, I think the North Finger could easily be two awful buildings blocking A1A from the intercoastal to the ocean, but if that goes forward, we're not going to get all of the other public improvements that we really need to get so that truly, this will be public land for public purpose where the public can enjoy it. If not, it really, I think, all just goes away.
Yeah. And that's where I just, yeah, I mean, that's where I just think Bahia Mar is worth the investment the city would make in it to make, to have the seawall rise, to improve it and it, this is a, a gem of 39 acres that the city would have in perpetuity that we could, just as we passed a $200 million bond for park improvement, I'm sure the residents would support us investing in Bahia Mar if it was, if it was ours to improve it and to get it to where it needs to go. So, I...
Okay.
Well, I have a comment too.
I think we can...
Go ahead.
Great hearing of you all. I think we're also missing the fact that we have the responsibility as the Commission to deliver a world-class hotel and marina to this city. That's the whole purpose of this property.
Sure.
So, when I look at it and I'm kind of trying to evaluate what's the best use, I'm looking at it, well, first, how do we get that world-class hotel and world-class marina and along with the other public purpose amenities that Steve was talking about, whether it's the seawall or the, the restaurants and the infrastructure improvements they're going to make, all of that, that'll also go along with it while protecting the boat show. And I, I do want to have more additional meetings with the boat show too, to really understand how much property they currently use and how much property they may feel they will lose on the entire peninsula. But I think first, how do we get the world-class hotel and marina? Because that's what the city of Fort Lauderdale wants us to deliver as a Commission. And how we do that, I mean, the trend now, everything I see, we have condo hotels. The, the traditional hotel model isn't really the traditional, isn't how the financing is evolving in the future. So, we have to go to this condo slash hotel model for the financing to line up, to make sense so that they can turn, turn around and make the improvements we are asking them to make. So, that's how I'm coming about, you know, trying to make the right decision.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that's fair and I'd say with the, yeah, with the approved site plan 2017, we'd get a world-class hotel, right?
I don't think, I, I'm not crazy about the 2017 either. I actually like what, you know, Steve and, you know, Dean have done to make the changes. I think the changes are, are, are good. I think they're beneficial to the public too. We can't forget about that. I like the promenade and the restaurants on the water and I like less buildings and more green space. So, I like what I've seen. It sounds like the boat show likes the new site plan a little bit better too. There may be some other parts of the lease that they want to work on, but I think, I think in terms of the site plan, which isn't really what we're necessarily voting on, well, maybe we do need to understand the site plan too because it will be contingent somewhat with the lease. So, I, I, I think we've done, I think we've come a long way in changing the site plan so that it meets the needs of the public, the needs of the marina, the needs of, most importantly, you know, well, the needs of the boat show is most importantly the public. So, I, I think we, I think we're in a good place. I, I feel comfortable with what we, you all have done. You all have brought back to us. I know there are some options, Ben, and I really appreciate you bringing those up because I do want to understand all the options, but we've heard what you've brought back. We've heard what, you know, Dean and Steve have, the feedback they've received from the tenant. No, they're not interested in that, so we do have to kind of cross them off the list. So, I, I think this is, this is, this is kind of where we are, honestly, but...
Cool.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, so I didn't, Andrew, I didn't get to ask you the question, so if you, if you don't mind coming. And Chris, let me try to phrase my question better to you and Alan, I guess. What's, and, and I don't know who the right person is to, who knows this. The, what's the height of the current site plan 21 or their suggestions right now? The stories? Does anyone know?
It's 12 stories in 2017.
And, and what's it now, 2021?
Well, that's to be negotiated. We don't know.
Oh, so we don't know.
We had talked about, we had talked about allowing the developer to, um, increase the size of the buildings in order to accommodate parking, because the, the 2017 site plan, uh, does not have parking in each building.
Okay.
And they were going to build a subterranean parking garage under the entire site, which is kind of not the, the most, the best use of money, but it would certainly add hundreds of, of available spaces on the beach.
Right.
For parking. Um, but, so we said if we eliminated the parking garage underground and allowed you to put the parking in each building, I don't know how many units there are in each building, but it was, you know, I think it adds several floors, uh, in order to accommodate parking. That would be the only addition to each building.
What does, so what does the current zoning allow height-wise?
12.
It allows 12?
12 stories.
So their site plan would be under 12?
No, I just got through saying it's currently 12.
Oh, so it's, so it'd be higher than 12?
It'd add more to each building in order to accommodate the parking.
Okay, gotcha. So the site, the 2021 site plan wouldn't fit in current zoning, so the zoning would have to be changed?
The, they were looking for a variance. Zoning doesn't change. The variance would be asked of the commission in order to allow parking to be in each building. So we don't change the zoning. The zoning change is the same, because that would have, we have to change the zoning for the whole beach. So we're not looking to do that. We're just looking to, they're, they're asking for, would be asking for a variance.
Oh, okay.
To go up the several floors for the parking.
All right, this is all news to me. I'm trying to understand.
Well, because we haven't had a final presentation, we just.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so they'd ask for a variance to increase in height, and then I guess that goes into the lease? We build that into the lease? Is that how that works, Alan? Build a variance?
No, that would be part of the site plan.
That'd be part of the site plan, the DRC process after.
Right.
So general site plan attached to the lease, doesn't talk about variance or height, and then you go after the specifics.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
We'd have to figure out how we do it.
Okay. It'd be a way to. Okay, cool. And then Andrew, just feedback on the 2016. If they did the 2017 plan, would that kill the boat show in effect? Or do you guys still operate or what's?
Show would still operate. It would, um, certainly wouldn't encourage growth in the show.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have four more people have signed up to speak. Um, Erin McNeil, Landon McNeil, uh, Carol Ann Bartholomew, and Lisa Namor. I think that's how you, that's what it said. Hi. Are you Erin?
Yes, hi.
Hi, Erin.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I'll keep this short. My name's Erin McNeil. My husband and I moved to Fort Lauderdale two years ago, and the Bahia Mar quickly became our second home. I strongly support the proposed developments and ground lease extension and feel that the commission should absolutely work with the developers in good faith to negotiate a lease that benefits all of Fort Lauderdale. The Bahia Mar currently sits in a massive private parking lot utilized roughly once a year by the public during the boat show. So it's currently not public. Um, with the new plans, over 97% of the property will be open and it's going to be inviting to everyone, locals, tourists alike. So it will really be enjoyed by the general public and everyone that lives here. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, or the decision isn't whether or not to build and expand on the land that's there now, but it's to decide whether or not the new site plans will be approved, or, sorry, the lease extension. So, um, sorry. Yeah, so it's not whether or not to build and expand on the land that's there, because that permission has already been approved and granted with the 2017 site plans, which were for rental units. And then lastly, as Andrew pointed out, Informa approved the 2017 plan, and the developers' new plan includes an additional 40% more land for the boat show to use. So I'm not sure why that subject is still on the table, because from what I understand, the Bahia Mar will always be home of the boat show. Developers have over 40 years left on their lease, and I strongly believe that they'll do what they do best. They'll develop. Given that their 2017 site plans were already approved, it's in the city's best interest to work with them instead of against them, as they have the city's best interest at heart in opening up the Bahia Mar into the world-class mixed-use community it was always intended to be and what everyone here that has spoken thus far seems to want. That's it. I'm done.
All right. All right, thank you so much. Um, Landon, followed by Carol Ann, Lisa, and I, I just saw Miranda Lopez is asked to speak too.
Good afternoon, uh, mayor and commissioners.
She's not here? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to keep this, uh, short. My name is Landon McNeil. Me and my wife Erin, who was just up here, touched on a lot of the points. We're homeowners in the Core Ridge neighborhood. As many of you know, the development of Bahia Mar is long overdue. With that being said, I strongly support the site plan and additional 100-year lease proposed. It is time to let the developers turn this into a world-class property and resort that everyone in Fort Lauderdale can enjoy and not just an old hotel that sits on an empty parking lot as it is now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Alan, can you, uh, correct me if I made, made a misstatement? Um, in order to increase the height above 12 stories, would they need to rezone it or would they need a variance?
I don't think the zoning changes. That may be a better question for Anthony, and it depends how it's presented and what the factors are.
It's always been my understanding it had to be a variance, so.
Anthony could probably. I'll have to defer to him.
Just a minute, Carol Ann, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Anthony Fohardo. Uh, there's an option to do it through a PDD, uh, which is effectively a rezoning. It would be a specified zoning for that site. And if you recall, there was a request similar to that on a previous iteration of the plan, but the applicant then chose to go just with what the underlying zoning currently had limitations for. So they, they AD6'd that idea at that time, but they could do it again.
But I'm, but in order to go from what they have now, which was, which is consistent with the current zoning of 12 stories, in order to add any stories, would it be, is it, it's not a variance process and it's not a rezoning?
You, you probably wouldn't do it through a variance process, because you have to show a hardship. There are five criteria for a variance process.
Right, right.
Through the Board of Adjustment, and then the appeal process from that is to Circuit Court. So you would, the, the preference would probably be a PDD process.
Okay. All right, I stand corrected then, Commissioner Sorensen. Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Carol Ann Bartholomew, followed by Lisa, followed by Miranda Lo, is Miranda Lopez still in the audience? I saw her earlier. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Ann Mazza Bartholomew. You asked my fellow neighbor what she wanted the commission to do. This is what I want you to do. I want you to say no to an extension of the lease. I want you to say no to condos on public land. I want you to wait for the tenant to respond, because maybe the tenant's interest would be piqued in some of the other options that have been brought forth, and there may be others. And most of all, I would like you to stop saying that giving a 100-year lease is not giving away or selling public land. It's disingenuous. Commissioner Moradis, you asked how the city of Fort Lauderdale provides a world-class hotel and marina. My understanding is that's what the lease requires right now. Enforce the lease. Bahia Mar is the gem of this city. It needs to be preserved for the public and for the boat show. Once you go down this path, there is no turning back. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Okay, don't go away. So, um, Alan, um, is, is a lease selling the land? When you, if you give a lease, whether it be for 50 years or 100 years, are you selling the land or are you leasing the land?
No, you're leasing the land and the, the condos can, excuse me, cannot be in perpetuity, because you would be transferring title to the property, so that's why you can't have it in perpetuity. That's why the city of Miami, our county, everything else does it through a lease, uh, because there is no transfer of the simple. You're essentially creating these, I don't want to say air parcels, because they're not technically air parcels if it's going to be that one building, but essentially that's what you, you own the underlying land, and then you're giving basically a non-perpetuity ownership interest in those little boxes, basically, that you're going to have in those buildings, but the land remains yours.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly.
I just want to respond though. We are the public now. We care what happens to this property now. 100 years sounds like perpetuity to me, because I will never have that public land back. So that's what I would.
I just want, but I just wanted to understand what the legality was.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying.
But I also want to say, so how many years have, has there been a lease on this property right now?
Many, I don't know.
And how has the public enjoyed this land?
No.
I mean, uh, uh, we, we, we're, we're acting like we're taking away a, because I keep hearing gem, and it is a gem. But no one's ever enjoyed it. No one's ever used it. So to, to act like we're taking away or selling a, a gem that like, oh my God, people flock to every day because they just love it so much there, that's disingenuous.
I think they could. I think they could flock there.
Well, that's what we're trying, yes.
Had other options.
And they will, and that's what we're trying to do.
We have to disagree. I just think.
Okay, no problem.
The condos, I, I can never see in any lifetime the condos being reverted back. What are they going to be leveled? Are they going to be leveled when the 100-year lease is over?
Well, there aren't that many, there aren't that many 100-year-old condos hanging out there right now.
After 40 years, when the lease is over, we could level that hotel.
So why couldn't we level them at 40 and not level them at 100?
Oh, no, no. Condos, I'm like 100% against. I'm not saying build condos now and level them in 40 years. I'm saying we have.
Well, why build, why build 651 rental apartments?
You know, maybe they can build it. I just don't thi, I just don't see it. And I could be wrong. I think it's a gamble worth taking.
It is a gamble. Thank you.
Well, I honestly don't want to gamble the public, you know, the public interest. I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing and we're doing it, you know, reasonably, so.
We have to.
All right, is Lisa, Lisa, I can't, whoever, you wrote your last name, it's, is it Namor?
It's Namor.
Namor?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lisa. Followed by Marilyn Maman, oh, she just signed up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I do want to go back to Mr., um, Glassman's comment about the gem. It is true that nobody, um, on a regular basis can enjoy the gem the way it is today. I can tell you that I represent Bahia Mar Fort Lauderdale Beach Hotel and all that encompasses right now as the general manager. And I have been sitting throughout these meetings for the last, I guess, five, six years that, you know, we've been talking about this. Um, today I understand that we're talking about an extension of a lease. We're talking about, um, turning the rental properties into condo properties. We're talking about assuring a world-class resort, um, that everybody in Fort Lauderdale can enjoy. Currently, that is not the case. We do our very best to bring the public in and provide different opportunities for that throughout the year. But the way it stands now, it's a hotel. It's a very big parking lot. It has a tennis court. It has a beautiful marina. I look out my window every day and see beautiful mega yachts. I enjoy it every single day. I'd love to be able to sit there and watch everybody else enjoy it as well, along with not just our local environment and the community, but also as a global place for people to come. It is a global place the five or six days of the boat show. And I understand that, um, the boat show is in, in tune with what we are proposing currently um, under the new lease or if we were to move forward with the new lease. And that's great, because I work hand-in-hand with the boat show on the ground every single year that they are there. It is the most fabulous event and proud event I've ever been able to be a part of. And it would be a disgrace if they weren't there any longer. And I think the compromises and the negotiations that are being worked on today should move forward. I am in full support of this, and I promise you, at the ground level, I can tell you that as an employer, as a developer, the Tate Brothers are amazing. I don't think that we could get luckier than to have them put this program together for us. Um, you know, again, I want everybody to enjoy it every single day the way I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And last, is anyone else would like to speak? I have Marilyn Maman as our final speaker. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Hello, Commissioners.
Wrap it up, Marilyn.
I'm, I am, I am. Uh, I'm going to talk, I'm going to do something unique. I'm going to talk about the documents we came here to discuss today. How's that? Okay? I read the master lease, and I know you're going to be spending lots of hours with the attorney, uh, going over the terms of the master lease. And we've always had this chicken and egg situation, as Commissioner Sorensen points out, between the lease and the site plan. In 2017, we didn't have a lease. We had the site plan. So a lot of the issues that I want to focus on today on public access were dealt with in the site plan. And the city staff was very helpful back in 2017, and they put together a document called Public Access Area Maintenance Plan, which was incorporated as a condition of the 2017 site plan. And Mr. Mayor, you may remember, this is the document we were negotiating on at three o'clock in the morning. And all of the limitations and, um, regulations for how this, uh, open spaces were going to be handled were in this document. So let's now go to this lease, which you don't have a site plan, which now you have is the lease. And so let's put all of the concerns and issues that ended up in the site plan into the lease, because that's what you have in front of you. And actually, that's where they should have been. They should have been in the lease, but we didn't have the lease, so we put them in the site plan. So specifically with relating to the public access areas, there are only two types of public access areas on this plan, the 2021 plan. There's the promenade, which is the big important one that goes around the whole area. And then there are, uh, one or two open areas, like the lawn-like area on the intercoastal, and some open areas between the buildings. Those are called public access areas. They've got the promenade and you've got public access areas, sometimes referred to as parks, but they're not parks. They're privately owned, open spaces that the public is allowed to use, subject to the limitations in the master lease. So when you go to the master lease and you talk with the city, uh, attorney, I would draw your attention to Article 3, which are the defined terms. And if you go down through the defined terms, you will find something called special functions. What is a special function? A special function is any event in which the public is not allowed to participate that occurs on the promenade or in these park-like areas. Okay? Whether or not they require a special permit, special events permit. When we did the, um, plan in 2017, we made a distinction. We said that only events that require a special event permit from the City Planning Commission would be permitted to close the promenade. That is not in this current lease. I draw your attention to it. I'll be happy to give you the documents. I think I've emailed them to you and I'm going to make them available. Okay? Look at this, these things carefully. So if you want to make sure that that public promenade, which is the signature piece, you have to limit the amount of times that it can be closed to the public, and you should control that, not the city manager. That's one of the issues in this lease that the city's attorney has already pointed out, that there is, um, uh, delegation of power to the city manager to increase the number of times that it can be closed. That should be your, your call on when you can close the promenade. Second thing is in these little so-called public access areas, i- it's even worse. We, uh, agreed in 2017 that we would limit the amount of time that these areas could be closed to the public. And it was, we were arguing six times, eight times, three events, two days, three o'clock in the morning, everybody got crazy. Okay? Let's clarify that now. You have the opportunity now. Pay attention to this when you talk about this with the city attorney. I'd be happy to give you my suggestions that, you know, I think you should be focusing on. Uh, I think you should, again, only permit the promenade to be closed with a special events permit. I think you should limit the amount of, um, times that the public access areas can be closed to a specific number of times, not open-ended, not additional times available to the city manager's discretion, because if I were the city manager, I would not want that discretion. I do not want to be in a position where somebody comes to me and says, I have a charitable event and the mayor loves this charitable event and I want an extra closing. You don't want to be in that position. You want to be very specific in the master lease. It's only X times a year that you can close it for a certain duration. You can have all the parties you want, all the bar mitzvahs and weddings, but it's only a certain amount of time, certain duration. And then you will have what I consider to be the best compromise on public access. Nothing's as good as a park, but if you're going to have a promenade and you're going to have public access areas, then just make sure that you've, you focus some attention on the duration and limitation of when they can close those public access areas. I also included some other things. Signage, for instance. What's the point of having a big promenade if there's no sign in the front that says the public is invited to use this, um, uh, promenade from the hours of nine to seven or whatever hours you do, you, you pick? And also, the public access areas have to be operated, maintained, and replaced by the condominium, by all the leases, the leasie and all the subleases. That's in the master declaration. You should pay attention to that, that the condominium owners, and you can call them whatever you want, branded hotel people, they're going to be putting aside money to, uh, maintain the common elements of the property. Okay? They're going to put that money away like a reserve fund, just like all other condominiums do. You know this, Commissioner, uh, Glassman. And that money is going to be used to operate, maintain, and replace all the common elements of which these public access areas are. Now, I guarantee you that that money's going to be spent on the lobbies and the lawns in front of the buildings, and nobody's going to want to spend that money on maintaining and replacing and repairing the public access areas. So I would suggest to you that when you discuss this with the city attorney, that there'd be a separate reserve account established specifically for the maintenance, operation, and replacement of the elements of the public access areas. Okay? This way, we always know, and all the potential purchases and subleases always know. This is publicly accessible land, and you're responsible for it, and every year you have to put away a bit of money to make sure that when it needs to be repaved and the lights need to be fixed, this is 100 years, ladies and gentlemen. Okay? You're going to have to repair it, replace it, all of that. There's money set aside specifically for that purpose that can't be raided for anything else. Thank you very much and have a happy holiday.
Did you get all that, Mr. Wallow? I thought her points were all well-taken.
Yes, but I think. But I think, Mayor, I think.
Wait a minute, wait, what?
Have to have the board, I think the boardwalk can only be closed or the promenade by a special event permit. I.
Well, if, if she's saying that it, it wasn't specified in the new, in the new proposed agreement.
I think, I, no, but I mean, in the new document that we have. I'll check it out, but I, I.
But all of her, all of her points are well taken. I appreciate your, your, having done that examination. I agree with all of them.
Yes. Thank you. What'd you say, Alan?
I said there are assessments already built in for that purpose.
I'm sorry, there already are?
But you, but you know what, Marilyn?
There's already assessments for those common areas.
There are already assessments for those areas. And what about the boardwalk? Doesn't that need a special permit to close?
Not, not the way it's drafted. Now you all are going to have to dictate, you know, the limitations on that and, uh, how, what you want. It's a non-ex, non-exclusive.
But I think it should be subject to the same special permit requirements as any other site in the city.
Thank you.
Um, Marilyn, you, uh, what did you say? I forgot what I was going to say. All right, I'll think of it. Um, okay.
Remember what the judge said.
Yeah, I know. Uh, okay, any other comments? Because we need to, uh, next steps are, what, what are we recommending as next steps, Alan?
My recommendation is that we schedule a time with each one of you so we can go page by page and.
Okay. And we're basically waiting for the valuation now, right?
Well, right, and then, and we could do that in the meantime if you want, or we can wait till then.
No, no, I, I prefer to have a separate meeting in the meantime. Let's use that time to.
Yes. But I, is anyone expecting a surprise with this appraisal or something? Does anyone, I mean, I think we can almost guess what it's going to say.
But I think, I think the point was, let's have something concrete.
Okay.
We're spending the money. Let's, let's respect the outcome.
Right.
So, all right, so that's what we'll do. So there's nothing, so we have no date certain as to when we're going to bring this up again. Let's wait until we have the valuation and then we can, we can put it back on the calendar. Okay. All right.
And the appraisal is the same company that did the last appraisal?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, and why is it taking 60 days if they did the last appraisal? I mean, I've seen building appraisals. I've seen property appraisals two months to update that appraisal.
The timeline they gave us to be current and to update it to today's standard was 60 days. It was ordered.
It may be less. It may be less.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes.
So there have been discussions, suggestions that we consider retaining Ernst &amp; Young, who is currently performing the financial analysis of Five Ash and the One Stop, to also conduct a financial analysis of this proposal to evaluate the reasonableness of the, uh, offer in terms of, uh, of, of the revenue streams for us. And I want to know if this is something that the commission as a group wants us to move forward with. I've spoken with Ernst &amp; Young. They're prepared to undertake this. They are going to put together a proposal. We can do this as an extension of the existing agreement, but I don't want to move forward on this unless this is the, uh, general consensus of the commission.
So what timeframe are they? So what timeframe are they suggesting, and approximately what is the cost that they're projecting?
They would do it concurrent with the timeframe, waiting for the appraisal that we're on. They're not, there's not a business plan for them to evaluate, they're simply going to be looking at, doing a financial analysis. They would also look at the economic impact statement that the, that the tenant has proposed, just for, again, reasonableness. They're not going to go back and try and recreate it. We don't have a, we don't have a cost proposal from them yet. I just discussed this with them during our status update on the One Stop and Five Ash evaluations, but they are certainly open and amenable, and, again, would do this concurrent with the existing work on the appraisal, hopefully have it all back at the same time. So again, I, I just want to know if this is the, the will of the commission. If not, we'll
I, I personally think it'd be a great idea. What does the rest of the commission think? I mean, any tools that we have to best analyze the deal for the community, I think we should always leave at our disposal.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Well, I, I definitely want to see them talk about that economic study that we were given and
Well, that was from, that was from the tenant.
Right, but I want them to at least take
They could certainly use that as a guide
Yeah, and then, I think they can look at the revenue models, but I just, I mean, I really hope that this is gonna be happening concurrently with when we're rating for this
That's absolutely intended.
You okay with that? You okay with that?
Because I think that we really have to look at coming back and, and moving at an agenda item. You're saying the appraisal's coming in the beginning of February?
So, I defer to the city manager on
Yes. So if you can, if this can be concurrent, or approximately concurrent, if you could bring it up at the next commission meeting for, for approval, I
I, I'm not sure that needs approval. I believe the city manager can do it, but I want to make sure, again, before we move forward, that
There's a consensus, I just, yeah.
Yes, and, and can we, can we see all of this now, after, hopefully we've all met with Alan, and we have the appraisal, and we have Ernst &amp; Young? Can we see this moving forward, like, in the beginning of February?
Well, we have to wait until we get the results.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and then, right after we get the results, then we can set it for another, another discussion and see what the next step is. Because I'm ready to make, I mean, by that time, we should all be ready to make some sort of decision, one way or the other.
Yes, that's why I'm saying, I think we meet February 1, correct?
We do.
We should just say, let's keep moving.
Well, I don't think February 1's, February 1's not the date, because, because if we're only gonna get the appraisal back sometime, the first part of February, it's not gonna be February 1. So it should probably be some, let's just wait until we get the appraisal before we start making any dates.
Maybe you could just check in with them, Chris. I mean, again, 60 days is a long time for just updating something you've already done. Just, I'm just saying that.
Okay.
I, I agree with you.
But if that's what they're telling us
I know, I understand.
What are we gonna do?
Well, they're our client.
We can nudge them.
We can say we'd like it.
Yeah, but I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to compromise the result by
No, I, I don't want to either, but although I could probably write that appraisal to you right now, and I'll be real close. Thank you.
John, quick question for you.
What's the surprise of this appraisal?
And I think you said this before, I just want to hear it again.
Certainly.
Upon the arrival of an appraisal, what does that do? I mean, what does it do to what we already have here now? What happens, other than, I know we want it, not so much me, what happens when that appraisal gets to town?
I think it is one more data point in your decision-making process. No more, no less.
So if we get it, what, what do we, like, right now?
Can I tell you what?
Can I talk to the
Yeah, but if he, I think he's struggling with the answer.
He's not struggling. I'm probably struggling with explaining it. Let me get it from him. Now, no pun intended, just, just give me a minute. So I get it.
Right.
And then, we're gonna use it. To do what? Because right now, with what we have, the current lease, we pretty much know the value of it, am I correct?
We have two appraisals, which give us an approximate value. One is a dated one, one is a current one, but it is more of what we would call a broker's price opinion, so it was not done to the same level of detail that the previous one was. So what we are currently requesting, and again, I'll defer to the city manager on this, is a comprehensive appraisal, which, again, would be, would be somewhat more detailed than the opinion we got from Colliers recently. So it will give us a reasonably firm value of probably two things. One is the value of that leasehold interest for us based on the net present value of the income that we receive from it, also assuming that the value of the current building will be zero at the end of the lease term, because it will be at a point where it probably has to be torn down. So the only remaining residual value on the site will be the land itself and the marina. So it will incorporate all of that, that'll give us one value. The second value that I expect they will probably give us is the value of that, of that site. So one is based on an income stream, one is based on the value of the land and associated amenities with it. That's my expectation. Again, I, I'm, I'm not involved with the appraisal, but my expectation is that's what it will give you, and I think that's why, as, as Commissioner Glassman referred to earlier, it talked about a hypothetical value. So that hypothetical value is hypothetical because the, the property is currently encumbered by a lease. Without that lease in place, we can determine what the value of that site is today, value of land, value of marina, value of building.
That's correct.
So, so the hypothetical is, if we did not have that lease in place, what would that site be worth? And again, that also has to take into consideration the current zoning that we have in there versus the upzoning that the applicant is, is hoping to accomplish here. So there are certain values to the time extension that they're being granted, and the upzoning that they're asking for. So I, I anticipate all of that will be in that appraisal.
Okay, so the hypothetical that came from Commissioner Glassman, and then the validation that it's not a science, it's art, came from the mayor. Right? So you don't, you wanna, you want to go ahead and
Well, I, I think, I think, just to, and to, and to continue with what he just said, for me personally, if, if, if I was to say, well, Commissioner, I would like to make, the, I would like to make the terms based on a fair rental value, then it would be based on what the value of the property is times a certain percent. That's why, that's why the value of the property is important to me, whether it's 100 million, 200 million, or 300 million, you know, whatever percent we choose, if that's the way we go, would be based on the value. And then having that, and then having that financial analysis on top of that gives us a better idea as to what, what the worth is of that, of that site, and what, and what we can derive, what we can possibly derive for the community going forward for the next 100 years.
Okay.
And aren't those leases 50 and 50, by the way? Yeah, okay.
Mayor, also, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, there was an issue with the tenant and the boat show, over, I think it was a 45-day notice, or a 30-day notice. Are we now, by pushing this out further, are we affecting that intent that the tenant has to give to the boat show? I just remember we had an issue with that.
I think the boat show has waived that, they've waived that.
So that's all waived, so we don't, we're not troubled with that?
We're not, we're not, yeah, we're not tripping over that.
So there's no, okay, good, I just wanted to make sure.
That's a good point.
I remember that came to us as an, as an issue.
All right, so
February will be pretty close to
Sometime in February, we'll have another meeting
Pending the arrival of that appraisal, we can make a decision one way or the other.
Correct. So now on to commission reports. So, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, hold on, let me switch.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today on this issue.
You're gonna leave? We're doing our reports.
I am.
They're waiting with bated breath
Our reports. Yeah. Most exciting part right here.
Come on, come on.
Hey, Stephanie, just tell Inter Miami that we got a lot of good feedback about them hosting all the, the high school football games this weekend.
Yes.
So that was great. Well, the best feedback was, everybody won, but then the second feedback was, they really enjoyed the stadium. So, thank you. I'll let you announce your district, Mackenzie, but I am gonna say, I'm very excited, Cardinal Gibbons won, yay.
You didn't do that last time, you announced them both, so why don't you just go ahead?
I'm trying to be, trying to be nice. So, yeah, no, that, that was great. The one thing, though, Chris, that I did get, a little bit of feedback, the traffic coming out, is there any way we can look into getting a light at 12th Avenue, I believe? I believe they made everybody go west, and then they had to do a U-turn on Commercial to come back. So I don't know if that's, what, what road, that state? County?
Commercial, I'm, I'm trying to think, there is a light at 12th, at 12th Avenue, I think.
I wrote that down, a traffic
You do have to go west to go before you go east.
They, everyone had to go west and then do U-turns, and so it was a little bit of a mess. So maybe we could just
Let me say this
What, you know, because you were there, tell me.
I was at the game.
Yes.
Then I spoke to Sergeant Jenkins, Jeff Jenkins, who had the detail, and I think Inter Miami had one proposal on the table of how they wanted to see traffic moving in and out of the stadium, so it forced everyone to one entry point, which made it like a
Little bottleneck.
Yeah, so, I think moving forward, according to what Sergeant Jenkins was telling me, that they do this all the time, and had they followed the recommendations from them, traffic would have flowed much better, like it does when we go to the, to the games of, of, of Inter Miami. So they tried something different.
All right.
It didn't work, but I think we all learned from that. I don't know if a light would help it, because when they do traffic mitigations, officers man those intersections and allow traffic to flow based on how many people are demanding an exit point or entry point at those levels. Then if we put a light there, it, it does nothing
It doesn't help.
So I think they got it.
All right, let's just keep our eyes on, on that, make sure the traffic is flowing and people can go east.
By the way, Vice Mayor and Commissioner, has Fort Lauderdale ever hosted these state championships?
First time ever.
That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, a lot.
That's pretty good, huh?
Yeah, very excited.
2-0.
It's your one, I think it's because they play
Think about it.
And I think to her point
First time ever Lockhart Park is hosted by Fort Lauderdale.
And the venue facilitated all those people.
Right, over 6,000 each night, I think.
And I think the only glitch was the parking, but that's what's something they tried. I think if we did it again, that would be handled. But it was amazing, I was, I was there for the St. Thomas game, did not go to the Gibbons game, but to have these teams, both of them, repeat it.
Right.
St. Thomas three times, Gibbons twice.
It's amazing, though.
That was amazing, so
First time in Fort Lauderdale.
And everybody did really enjoy their experience at the big stadium, so I'm
It was really nice.
Very appreciative to Inter Miami for that. Okay, so the traffic. Also, we did have a, a local kid, I shouldn't say kid, sorry, he probably has a title. Ben, what's the title when you're a senior at the Naval Academy?
Yeah, I don't know.
He's not, he's, he's
Senior at the Naval Academy.
Senior at the Naval Academy.
He's a midshipman.
Not a plebe, it's
A midshipman. I would just go with senior at the Naval
Yes, I want to be respectful, because he was a senior at the Naval, Naval Academy, but he went to Calvary Christian, and he's the one that helped win that game, so go Navy, that was another good game. So, okay, let's see. Speaking of Navy, are we gonna ever combine Navy Days and the Air Show again? What's, what's going, I just kind of crossed my mind.
Air and Sea Show.
Air and Sea Show, that's what it should be called.
It's only been, it's only been the
I know.
Right, but we all know it as the Air and Sea Show. Can we bring that back?
We can facilitate that discussion again. There were some impediments to that, that weren't our impediments, that caused them to separate and not want to be together.
Right.
We'll see if any of that
I don't know if Navy, if they're even coming back this year, are they having Fleet Week or Navy Days or all that?
I understand that they're, I understand that Fleet Week is
Yeah, it's coming back.
Plans to come back.
So I know the Air Show, I believe they would really like that synergy, so let's
They've, they've desired it for the past several years, it just hasn't been a, for, for whatever reason, the Navy Days suggested that the Air Show actually brought them back instead of bringing them up, and, but
Maybe we can look at it.
Maybe we can have that conversation
It makes sense, I think it's kind of fun when you are at the Air Show, you get to see the big ships out there.
Agreed.
I don't know, I thought it was always
I've raised that with, with both groups, and I think you have too, and
I have.
So, yeah, there, there hasn't been complete interest, but I think it's worth engaging, because
Right, I don't know who's in charge now, Chris.
Jesse Adams is the chair of
Navy Days?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that would be good if we, I know that's right around the corner. So, so I have rats in the gulf, very exciting topic, but
I don't think the residents would like to hear you refer them.
Do you have?
Terrible.
I have them in Victoria Park, too.
Why would you call them rats?
Yeah, oh, Steve.
Okay.
I don't even know what to say sometimes. So, do you have them down at your place? Maybe I'll just shoo them down, south of Oakland Park, that's what we should do, catch and release.
That's like, that's like deplorables.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, no, no, it is an issue, though. So, the medians, I believe our city staff is working on the east side of A1A to help put some medians, but it's also on the west side. So if we can look into that, I don't know who it is, if it's Parks and Rec, if it's, I don't know who really maintains all that, but I have had complaints from both sides, But I have had complaints from both sides, from the residents in the galt and the business owners on the west side.
Probably maintained by contract, overseen by Parks and Rec is my guess. It's my first guess, but I'd have to check.
You got Parks and Rec in the back?
Yeah, Phil, I know we were looking with the property owner of Winn-Dixie and they were doing something, but then there were rats in the bushes themselves, which was our property. So, have we done any extra mitigating over there on the east and west side of A1A2? We had the businesses and then I went to take a walk on the beach and I, it was closed because of beach renourishment, but I'm happy it's being re-nourished. Other issue?
So, we'll look at it, Commissioner. I can say there's rats all over the city. It's, it's not confined to your area or any other areas.
It seems to be, the word infestation was used. So, it seems to be the first time I, it's really been brought to my attention, so...
I mean, it's, it's, it's something we can look at and we, there's, we have trappers that look at it, but they're on private property, public property, they're, you know, it's just...
I think the private property people are trying to address it. I guess maybe they're asking us if we could also try to help at the same time in the medians
We can look at that.
On the east and west side. That would be great. Lot of, a lot of great events around the community, but I'll pass to District 2. If that's how we're doing it, or maybe we could do you next, Mackenzie. I don't know, where's the mayor?
He just tapped me on the shoulder.
You're the mayor now, so it's your decision.
He said, he said I was next when, as he left the room. However, what I want to speak about, I think he may want to partake in it, but I do want to reiterate that the two state championship, local high schools in our cities are doing it again was great. And the, being there in that stadium and having residents come back to Lockhart was truly historical and momentous. And I just want to, Stephanie, you and your folks who brought this venue to us, it worked. And it proves that if you build it, they will come. It was filled, it was enjoyed, people were just totally surprised about what was there, because none of them had ever experienced a soccer game. And I said, maybe we can get you all to come back, both teams and some fans for a game next year and, you know, really show them what that stadium is all about. So, it was great, it was great, it was great. So, I think we, and maybe in January, we bring them back and we give them...
To a celebration.
We give them another...
All on public land, public land.
Public land.
Oh, public land?
All on public land.
But I couldn't get in until four o'clock, I couldn't go there at 12 and just pitch a tent.
That's a discussion we can have later.
So, how can I get in there when I want to just walk my dog?
I'm just saying.
Jump the fence.
Just saying.
Did you jump the fence?
I would do.
Okay, I mean, it's public land.
I'm just saying.
Love it, beautiful, public land.
So, how do you access, how do, Commissioner Glassman?
Excuse me?
How do I access the Hall of Fame? I just want to take a walk in the little public piece we got in there. Do I have to wait for it to open or can I just, how do I get in there?
I think it's closed now.
Yeah. We got a public piece in there, right?
Something Hall of Fame?
Well, what do you mean we have a public?
I mean, it's like, that's, that's our land, isn't it?
Yeah, well...
Can I go in there anytime I want?
Well, you just, is this a rhetorical question?
I'm just asking. I want to, I'm trying to...
Oh, you can.
I'm studying public land and access.
You know, there's all sorts of public land. And by the way, the New River Trading Post is public land, Fort Lauderdale public land. There were bad answers given before, and they have the ability to sell condos on that land. And that is Fort Lauderdale public land, New River Trading Post down the old post office site in Hymashe. That is city public land, and they have the ability to build condos, sell condos. And I don't think they ever have, but just so you know, just to set the record straight.
The YMCA is, the new YMCA we're building is public land.
Right.
With a lease. I just can't go in there. I can go in there when the hours of operation.
Right, I mean...
I'm just trying to fix...
Right, public land doesn't just necessarily mean, okay, open and free for all. It doesn't mean that.
But I can go to Holiday Park from eight to nine, right?
Yeah, there's closing times at public parks, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, I wanted you to come back before, I only had one issue, really. And my issue, it's not so much an issue as it is a concern. I know we have a walk-on tonight for the redistricting, and I think the reason I pulled it last time or had questioned it was so that it's fair, transparent, and I just thought the, the entity that we're bringing in could not bring that, especially when I saw that representative sitting on TV when we had an issue with the count for the congressional race. So, I didn't know if we can get a fair and impartial redistricting, but as I watched what the county did and when it was over, it was the first time in the redistricting history that the commissioners could not impact the outcome of that map. And the university did it. And I was just thinking, they have all this information over there, all these demographics and everything. If we could pull them into this, they probably could expedite it, because they've done the whole county. And to extract us might, because I know you want to just get it done, because we have to. And I think if we deviate, that's if we want to, it's up to us. We bring the college in and I think we will have all the data, and then it's fair and it's impartial, and then they, they draw it based on how you look at the demographics, the populations, and, and you just, you do it.
All right, so, well, I think it's mayor's discussion, it's mayor's discussion, so when we have the item tonight, we can talk about that, yeah.
That's all I have.
I'm just surprised the county got it done ahead of us, you know?
Well, because I, I think because of that process and...
Could be.
Remember, 10 years ago, they had, it was nine maps, then there was four other community maps. And then the night they were going to vote, another map appeared, and it was, it came from the commissioners.
Okay.
So, we all sat and participated in workshops and did things, and we got that last map and the last two maps that were drawn impacted me, because I was running for county commission back then. So, I woke up out of my district. I went to sleep in my district. I woke up, but they, they gerrymanded the outcome.
Should have stayed up later.
I think this map truly just indicated the workshops of the public and what the college or the university studied and thought were fair maps.
But didn't they have a process at RFP or an RFQ? They didn't just say, go do it. They actually discussed and set up a process by where they had the college do it.
Driven by their charter, their charter was amended to...
It made an amendment where it has to be done by university.
But for it to come out as well as it did, and I didn't agree with map C.
Yeah.
But they all read it the same.
Okay.
Just a little pushing of lines, but I think map C...
Line's a little different now, though.
Oh, yeah, it's different. I'm running eight now.
Let's just, let's just make, let's just make this something we discuss tonight and then walk on.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm bringing up.
Okay.
That's all I have.
No, because we, I agree with you, we need to get this done, and the unbiased process is the way we want to go forward. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, it was a pleasure to join you and Vice Mayor for P.O. Erasi Place dedication. I thought that was a great event and on the galt, and that was really nice. So, so many events in the last couple of weeks, so many holiday parties. Really enjoyed the FOP, Dolphin Democrats, the Winter Vest Boat Parade was amazing after not having that last year. Of course, we had a solid waste working group, those continue along. I attended the Point Settah...
You had Mitch's Deli.
Yes, you did, I'm going to get to that. But before that, I actually attended the Point Settah Hyatt Civic Association, Mayor.
Oh.
Yes, I did. I did that on one...
I'm allowed to go to that, because you, you trumped me there.
Well, you went to the one before that.
Locked me there.
No, you went to the one before that. I went to the one on December...
In my neighborhood, you went.
You can go as a resident.
I know, but I can't go.
You just can't run your mouth.
It's okay. I went on December 15th. It was on Zoom, don't worry about it. Anyway, that was a really good meeting. And then, yes, I did see you, Mayor, on Saturday at Mitch's Downtown Bagel Cafe.
Which I had lunch at today.
Excellent, excellent. Glad you're...
I saw a bunch of judges there.
District 2 business, small businesses, that's excellent. That's about it, really. Let me just see, any comments? I think we talked about the state championships. I think everything else is good, so I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Nice red watch.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
Nice.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Yeah, good couple of weeks. There's a, there's a reality show called The Christmas Light Fight that shows Christmas and holiday houses that are decorated. And Lisa and Carol, who own a house in Lauderdale Isles, won that were awarded the, the Christmas Light Fight trophy. And so, if you go to their house, it's Whale Harbor Lane, it's amazing, a lot of pretty colors, moving Santas, little homes. Anyway, so they're, hopefully we'll recognize them somehow, so they're, a lot of passion in there.
Keep Christ to Christmas.
Light display. Your classroom's twitching. It's, it was a good, it's a good display. It's for all, all religions and creeds, their light display.
Is this a light in your neighborhood? Is it the home decorated in your neighborhood?
Home is, no, it's in Lauderdale Isles.
Lauderdale Isles.
But it's awesome.
Drive by and check it out.
Who sponsors that? Who actually does that?
They do.
That event?
It's ABCBS. It's a like network show. Yes, TV, reality TV.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, ABC, thank you for the correction, or ABC. Let me just get the, I'll just get the address so y'all can stop by if you want.
Do you have a video handy, Mark? Do you have a video that would be handy that they could just put up real quick?
Oh, can you put it up?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Were you in the, were you on TV?
No, no, they, I got a, I got a face for radio, so they don't put it... 2418...
What's that?
Exactly, come on.
Don't sell yourself short.
Don't sell myself, thanks.
Send to Anna.
2418 Whale Harbor Lane, 2418 Whale Harbor, anyway.
Right, everyone's going to go there now.
Everyone's go, go. Please enjoy, Mark's going to show us a little video. It'll take you a minute, yeah, I'll go on to other things, we'll, we'll come back to that. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, because that was one of the highlights of my last couple of days. Let's see, couple of questions. This is, maybe y'all are tracking this. The, in the state senate and state house, there's possibly movement towards a bill that would toughen law for hate crimes against the, against municipal and public property as a hate crime. So, it stemmed from this vandalism in Delray Beach. I think it was when the guy drove over...
Burnout on the Pride Way.
Okay, drove over the intersection. Yeah, that was it. So, evidently, under Florida law, people can be charged with hate crimes when they've attacked someone because of race, color, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or age. The current state law also provides for hate crime against private property, but not for public roadways and other public property. So, to, let's see, it's Senator...
I think we should do a resolution supporting that.
Yeah, Senator Polsky and Slossburg in the House, yeah, are pushing it. So, anyway, I was wondering if we could support that.
I think we should, I think we should. Is there consensus?
I've got, yeah.
Okay.
Not me, I don't do resolutions that, so you guys can do what you want.
Well, it's regarding a state law.
I don't do them.
Okay.
The county does a lot of resolutions.
That's all right.
What are you going to do?
They get the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a majority that's interested in...
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Alan, am I giving you enough info on that, or?
No, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, well, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Because my question would be, right now, if I took my car and I ran into this building, right? What's the, what's the ruling on that legally?
Well, you're not supposed to drive vehicles into a building, so you are committing a crime. You're committing a crime, it's, it's...
So, all the difference now is going to be, is going to be now, I get...
There'll be greater penalties.
Hate crime, too.
Right.
Okay.
Hence penalties.
And this is public land.
After coming, the doors open, hit it.
Okay. Um, thank you, thank you, thank you. Next one, and Chris, this is periodically neighbors ask about, you know, funding or staffing for different departments. And this was in the Chief Service Officer Department. Lot of work that happens around MLK Day, and some of the neighbors saying they'd love to see more support or a vehicle to help the Service Officer Department, so...
Feedback is noted.
Feedback's noted, okay, great. Thank you for that. Let's see, let's see, let's see. Let's see if I had anything else here. Great, I think that's it, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have it up yet?
If the video's up. Jingle bell, jingle bell, all the way.
Come on, Marky.
Nice voice.
Here it is.
Here it is, here it is. Where's your Carol?
Oh, woo, that's nice.
There we go, look at this thing.
Can you eat those gingerbread houses?
So...
Video or just a picture?
No, it's a video. Is that edible?
Watch this, look at Santa on the roof, if you can see Santa on the roof moving. They built this thing to make Santa move on the roof.
Beautiful.
Look at this.
That's a public loose.
That's Carol and Lisa right there.
So, it's been a blast that neighbors have all been watching us grow each year. And that, that's the fun part, we've seen like kids grow up, we've been part of their story growing up. It's about two and a half months worth of work. We start the end of September, beginning of October, and we finish up normally right around Thanksgiving. A team of two.
Just the two of us.
The two of us, everything you see here is two of us. That's why it takes two and a half months.
Yeah, this is true.
And a lot of Advil. When we finally finish it and the light-up night, the first night, because when we hit the switch, all you hear out in the middle of the street is, yay! So, I was like, that's like, there it is. That was the, that's my two and a half month payment right there. We love Christmas, we love the passion of Christmas, and we also are involved in a rescue. So, bringing people here, sharing this with them, the community, and then bringing visibility on to the rescue that we collect donations for. It's just all worked out really, really well for us. We have visitors anywhere from 100 years old to, you know, three months old. You know, so we see a vast majority. And, you know, each person, whether you're young or you're older, you know, they get the same joy out of it. And it's that joy that I think keeps us going.
Wow.
Thank you. Beautiful.
After, after plugging up three strings of lights at my house...
It puts you to shame, I'll tell you.
It blows out, I mean, I don't know how these people can do it. I mean, and I've done it for years with my kids, I put a lot of stuff...
Do you have any photos?
It's like...
Yeah.
I think I do, Steve, I'll send them to you. But they won't come to this commission, no, I'll send them to you.
Nice.
I'll text you.
Okay, let me just, let's wrap this up, because I know we have...
You're going to do your house like this?
I know we have something going on upstairs.
Go ahead, Mayor. You're going to do your house like this?
Do I what?
You're going to do your house like this?
Yeah, right. I don't climb trees anymore. Just, just walls.
The chimney, you go.
Okay, so I joined, I joined Commissioner Glassman on the, and the Vice Mayor, and that dedication to P.O. Erasi. Really, it's a very touching moment, seeing his family and the neighbors in that area for having lost an advocate for our community who has been dedicated for so many years. Such a shame and a shock, and it's still taking a while to settle in, but it was really a fitting way to remember him. And so, I want to thank everybody involved with that effort that made that such a success. I also attended a number of other events that day, the Elizabeth King, Dr. Elizabeth King Toy Drive at the, at the Pelican Beach. It was very successful. Also went to a ribbon cutting of a new med spa, the Amira Med Spa on La Solis Boulevard. And, and also joined the others at the FOP Holiday Party at the Royal Pig. Let's see. Yes, the grand marshal reception over at the Hard Rock Casino presented the key to the city and a proclamation to the grand marshal of that parade, which was Mario Lopez. Really fun night, hundreds and hundreds of people from our community were there. It's a really great way to get back into the swing of the boat parade and everything that the boat parade represents in our community. And of course, the boat parade was a great success. I still don't know who the winner was. Did they reveal the, did you hear?
You were a judge.
I was a judge, but they don't tell you who won.
Couldn't get a list?
Put your numbers in and they're supposed to reveal it. Is Price Waterhouse still calculating the results?
Where were, where were you sitting? Where do the judges sit?
You know, we're on Laura Ward Park.
Yeah.
Right there, against, against the wall, right?
You didn't hear him?
I'm not, I didn't hear him or see him.
Oh, he was coming, I was right behind him.
You're with the people and...
Okay, you're with, you're the elevated above us.
No, no, actually, I was stuck in a corner.
Oh, were you?
Literally, he's between, he's between Riverside Hotel, that gate, and the seawall. He's sitting right there.
Right there, okay.
It's really, really isolated.
Yeah, okay, well...
So, so anyway, that was my evening. And, and in the, and also I attended the Winter in the Park this past weekend at the Imperial Point Neighborhood. Hundreds of people were out there, families, kids, everyone was out there. It was really a, a nice event, although it was in the dark, it was kind of unusual. So, along with the other, the rest of you, and tonight I'll mention it at the, at the meeting, just wishing everybody a great holiday coming up. One issue, there are a bunch of issues that I have here, but there's one in particular I just want to discuss. And I think, I know this is a resolution, I think you can support, Commissioner Mackenzie. But as we continue to talk about this, about the commuter rail system that, that has taken a lot of interest in, in South Florida. The, we're adding additional trains between Miami and West Palm. The discussion regarding the New River Crossing and the crossings over our main east-west thoroughfares, Broward Boulevard and Sunrise Boulevard, has now taken on a, a new aspect in which the discussion regarding the train versus, the, excuse me, the bridge versus the tunnel, it seems that with all the new information that's now been provided to, to the community,